I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get into our agenda this evening, I would like to open the floor for any public comment prior to the agenda items. If anyone has anything they'd like to share with the board, please feel free to come to the microphone and share it.
My name's Robin Brito. I live on Northfield. I just have some issues about the land. I know people have rights to build on land, stuff like that, and they have to go by the laws and bylaws, whatever. But my issue is, is the traffic issue is already kind of bad at both ends in Northfield. Route 13 and West Townsend Road, there's always accidents there all the time. And adding sixty-six homes, there's roughly going to be over two-hundred extra cars in the neighborhood on top of that. And it's, I just find that it's going to be a dangerous situation. Having only access to Northfield Road and not, let's say like the two-way or some other place.
Sir, so thank you for coming out. I'll tell you what, I probably should have been clear. You're referring, I think, to the Highfield Village item. That's going to be on our agenda tonight. So if I could ask you to please save your comments for when we open that item up. That would be fantastic. Hey, no worries. I should have been clear. Thank you, sir. All right. Anything else not related to our agenda items? Apologize for that. Our big agenda items tonight is we're going to be talking about Highfield Village. We're going to be talking about the Village Center bylaw. We're going to be talking about the Architectural Preservation District. So if you have something that's not about those three topics, this would be a good time for that. All right, great. Well, we'll get into our next topic, which is A and R for 205 Sunset Lane for Vito in Virginia. Pete Shirelio and David Ross is representing them.
Yes, I submitted the application for more check necessary paperwork to Marjorie. So what I have, and I'll submit these to the board. Our seven copies of the A and R plan, A and R Mylar, and Contour Plan.
You all have an eight and a half by eleven.
Same information, yeah?
If you don't want to roll the big ones out, it's a fairly straightforward. You've got 1.84, 2.84, we've got 270 feet of frontage.
This is in residence. Oh, it's an outline, okay. What is the frontage requirement for outlines?
It's listed right at the bottom.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you. Awesome.
One seventy-five.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Frontage is 100. Width through the building is 175.
Okay. Yeah, and according to the plans here, they've made up.
Okay, any thoughts from the board on the plan here?
I don't see any dwellings noted on either parcel. Are there any existing dwellings?
No, there are no existing dwellings on the parcel.
Because no infrastructure, I guess was...
No, the lots have been tested for septic. Board of Health, Jim Griffey has signed off, provided compliance for Title V issues. So, right, they're proposed building lots.
Good. Thank you. Yeah, well, it looks lot area and frontage. Check, check, check.
Looks good to me.
Ken, anything from your end?
Just the existing driveway that's in there that becomes like a right-of-way?
It's an existing fire road. There's other houses on it. It's going to remain in place. There's nothing within the deed to the existing parcel that references it. It'll just remain in place as is, existing right-of-way.
Okay, so this is just a question. Does that have to be rectified? Because it's actually a right-of-way that's not in the deed. My guess is it was an old fire road, and then people built houses on the old fire road.
Well, not being a lawyer, I'm not going to say whether or not it has to be rectified. It contained within the existing lot. So it's not like he's dividing the lot that then further divides the fire road. I think that when...
That's not true.
He means that...
No, he's not touching the fire road. It's not like the fire road is contained wholly within the parcel, and he's putting a property line down the middle of it.
He is.
No, the property line actually exists on...
The fire road will participate in both Lot 1 and 2.
And it currently does.
Yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I see what, well, yeah.
Today, it's one lot with a fire road that impedes on it. Tomorrow, it'll be two lots with pieces of fire roads on it, neither of which have any kind of deeding or right-to-pass associated with it.
Quite honestly, I think at the time of conveyance, that's going to become an issue. And what, I mean, I don't think it's an A and R issue. From this board's perspective, I think that it would be solid advice that the property owner may want to either formalize a right-of-way or grant rights of easement to the existing property owners and, you know, their successors and interests, all the fancy language that lawyers use for that. But I don't think that it's going to, the division doesn't technically affect it. I think that the conveyance would be where you'd get the hang-up, when someone did a title search.
Okay. And just for my own edification, let's say that the road split the middle of the frontage, and that there wasn't enough frontage on either side of the fire road. Would that have any impact on the A and R? If it was a deeded right-of-way, and it was a road that went through the middle of the property, and it dissected the frontage, does that have any impact on the A and R? Let's say that there was ninety feet on one side and forty feet on the other side of the road.
Yeah, I mean, it would. If it's a dedicated right-of-way, then you can, actually, you could use the fire road for frontage, in theory.
Okay.
Depending on when it was created, and I mean...
All right. Asking the questions because I'm not versed in this as you are, so...
I think there's a lot of different issues that come along with when you're dealing with an actual right-of-way, whether it's public or private, when it was created, the maintenance, the access, that kind of stuff. So that's a much more case-specific question.
Okay. Other than those questions, I didn't have any concerns.
I just have one question. So as far as the lot, the width through the...
Through the structure?
Through the building, yeah. Is that calculated based on like the front and side offsets? Or where's that? So I see it's indicated here for this parcel. I just wondered, like, for Lot 2...
Well, my understanding is what would happen is, depending on where they place the building, is where they measure the lot width through the building.
Okay.
And it's ultimately a decision that the building inspector interprets, because it's a zoning law. My understanding is the way that it reads would be along the closest portion of the building to the road. I mean, this remains fairly square.
Yep.
And one would infer from the shape of the lot that they're going to put the house up addressing the street, because I think once you start getting back here, you know, you don't, I wouldn't want my septic in front of my house, and if it was possible to put it in the back, and I think most people would feel the same way, and you get into a longer driveway and all the things that go along with that. So I think what he's looking at is the wider portion of the lot, assuming that that's the setback line, and that's about where the front of the house would be.
Okay.
Is that about what your assumptions were?
Correct.
And then on Lot 2, I mean, if you can't meet it on that, I mean, it's just so wide that...
And aside from that, there's no issues of width. This could be one foot wide, and that would still be acceptable.
Yes, the way that I understand that the bylaws are written.
All right. Thanks a lot. Do we need a motion to approve this?
No, because the current procedure has us submitting the...
The other boards. Okay, thank you. Thanks very much for coming to talk today.
All right, so that's going to wrap up the 205 Sunset Lane A and R for this week. So we'll move next to our public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing on Highfield Village project on the south side of Northfield Road between Mass Ave and Northfield Road.
Do we need a motion? Sorry, I don't do this right. So with that...
I mean, you can do the motion and vote. Do you want your folders?
Yes.
Hi. Hi, good evening. I'm John Godfrey. I've been here with the board, and the members having come before you several times in the past. The progress of our proposed development is that we had submitted a set of plans some time ago, which you folks gave to your new consulting engineer, Rob Oliver of Ross and Associates. He...
I'm sorry to bother you, sir. Could you speak into the microphone more?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
I don't know what, you're getting picked up enough there.
Your consulting engineer, Mr. Oliver, reviewed our plans as submitted last fall and issued a letter on November 3rd containing a number of comments, suggestions, and recommendations. So we turned that over to our engineer, Mr. Oldfield, who's present. And at the same time, Adam had scheduled us, or shortly after that, he scheduled us for the February 9th meeting with the intention that we would respond to any comments from your consulting engineer. And perhaps if a discussion between the engineers was called for, that would be completed prior to February 9. Unfortunately, Mr. Oldfield spent a portion of the interim in the hospital, but he has now responded to the November 3rd letter and issued a set of plans to your consulting engineer last week, so that at the moment, the ball would be in the court of your engineer to review our responses to his November 3rd letter. So in short, we feel that we've come a long way towards conclusion of this. We think we've addressed all of the issues. If there are any items left for discussion between the engineers, that will ensue shortly, so we would request a continuance either to the second or third meeting in the future. I believe you'll adhere to your normal schedule now of the second and third Thursdays of the month. Is that correct? I mean, sorry, second and third Mondays.
Yeah, with or permitting.
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth Mondays. So I think just from our discussion prior to the meeting, Mr. Oliver believes, and I'll let him speak for himself, but I think he believes he can review the current set of plans and check on the revisions that we've made in accordance with his suggestions, such that he and he could, the project could be back here probably on the last meeting in March or the first meeting in April. And any of us would be glad to answer any of the questions that you have or that any of the folks in the audience may have.
Okay, thank you very much for the status update on that. So if you think it's okay, what I would propose to do is, we've got a significant turnout. Could I just ask the members, the audience, to show a hands how many people are here for the public hearing on this topic of Highfield Village? Okay. So I think since we have people here, it would make sense to let people bring forward their thoughts on the topic. Regarding the continuance, before we get into the thoughts from the public, I think we, I would like to propose that we entertain a motion for the continuance being requested.
Well, once you grant the continuance, you're putting the hearing on hold. So that would be the last thing that you do? After you hear all the input, then you do the continuance, and that's sort of like the timeout for the hearing.
Okay.
So once you make that vote, the hearing's technically not going on.
Got it.
So if you take evidence now, which would be all the testimony of the abotters, then you can continue at the end.
All right. Let's take testimony then, and we will entertain the continuance subsequently. So if folks would like to come up to the microphone and say who they are and where they live and speak their thoughts on this Highfield Village, that would be great.
Good evening. My name's Robin Brito, and I live on Northfield Road. One of the things that my concern is the traffic. As I mentioned earlier, I mean, I figured there's sixty-six homes. There'll be roughly 120 cars going to work in the morning, coming home at night, 2:40, 240 times going up and down the road. And already, we have, you know, safety issues with the abot. The road being, there's always accidents on either end of Northfield. And I've been involved with some of the, when accidents happen, I've been there to help out. So I know what, how serious it can be. I just, that's one of my main concerns, being that Northfield would be the only egress out of that property. Second thing I have an issue with that I want to, is the current, the amount of students that would be moving into this neighborhood, would the school system be able to handle the extra weight, the extra eighty, hundred students that we might be picking up? And I'm not sure that a project this size could handle that kind of, can we handle that amount of students? Just a concern. And anybody else?
Good evening. My name's Jim Rivers. I'm also a resident of Northfield Road. Been there for several years. My questions pertain to the water system, because it is on the well system in that area. How would that affect the residents bringing in those many units? And how would that affect our water table, for one? Also, like you mentioned with the traffic situation, how is that going to affect, you know, the current residents with so much additional moving, so many more additional moving parts? I mean, it's, we currently have children who do live in the area, who do play in our driveways and what have you. And with the buses that go up and down that road, as a matter of fact, it's with an addition of all of these vehicles, it's going to be somewhat more of a hazard. But my main concern would be the water levels. And pertaining to, relating to that, the fact that we are on our well system, are you bringing in city water, town water, or what have you, bringing in some lines to support that project? And if so, would that cost effect the residents currently in the neighborhood? That's what my questions and concerns are.
Thanks very much. Would you gentlemen take other questions? Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
How you doing? I'm Dan Matthew. I also live on Northfield Road. I've been there for approximately sixteen years. I've seen the area change over the years. I have two small children. I am worried about the school system also. The traffic, as the gentleman said, there's a lot of accidents. There's been fatalities on the intersections in that area. Right? Thirteen is highly traveled by, like, you know, eighteen-wheelers that go, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of incidents, okay? I'm really worried about the traffic. My road is so narrow that it's hard enough with just two cars going by that, you know, just with little traffic. If you add those extra cars, it's just going to be even worse. My question also is, are taxes going to go up if they do decide to run like sewer or water supply? Are they planning on running it from, if they were, would they be running it from Mass Ave side? Or would they be bringing it down, you know, like Route 13, or through the property itself through, from Mass Ave? Would they be putting a set of lights, or propose a set of lights on Route 13? You know, Northfield and Route 13, because it's already hard enough to pull onto 13, never mind cross Route 13 right there. I think that's one of the biggest things right there, is a set of lights on that intersection, if they were to do it off of Northfield Road. And would the only access be from Northfield Road, or would there be more than one access to this development? That's, you know, these are things that we need to know as a community. It's a big thing, you know, safety, safety first. It's just a big thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So any other public thoughts on the project?
I'm Judith Brito, and I also live on Northfield. And I think I have some of the answers, but I just want to make sure I have the right answers. The plan's called for sixty-six units. And are units single-family homes? And the plans also mention like a second phase. Are the sixty-six units, it total, or is that just Phase 1? How much more is going to go in? And also, was this previously farmland? I don't know. I'm just asking the question. If it was, are the taxes going to be repaid? And again, I'm very worried about the traffic. I'm very worried about the water and the wells. As somebody who just put in a new septic system and has had to re-drill a well because of Walmart blasting, really concerned about additional construction. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a specific size of these units for like square footage? Bedrooms? Is it just like small houses, big houses? Are they going to be just like single families, whether they're going to have in-law apartments? We need to find out more about that, too. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Irene Rivers. I also live on Northfield Road. I had a question as to where the entrance is going to be located for this dwelling. Will it be on Northfield? Or are they going to make a cut-through on the other side? I, too, am very concerned about the water. I'm also wondering, I just heard tonight, I don't know the facts, but they said they won't be drilling. If they do drill, I am very afraid for the septic systems and for the walls. So I'm also concerned about the school systems. They're already overly crowded. What that's going to do to the taxes and the pressure that it's going to put on everybody. So just a few of my questions. Okay? Thank you.
I just have one more concern, gentlemen. With the influx of more people moving into the area, will this put a burden or a strain on our fire department, and our police departments, and our medical care facilities?
All right. Anybody else? Before we get some thoughts from the proponent. All right.
I'll turn this over to our engineer, Mr. Oldfield. And I think that, you know, many of these issues, in fact, I would say all of these issues, as you'll hear from Mr. Oldfield, have been required of us to address by the town as we developed the project. So, Ken Oldfield.
Good evening. There's several, there's several issues that the audience and the abotters brought up. First, traffic. We did have a traffic report prepared for the area. Some of the items, they mentioned the end and the beginning of Northfield Road. We do have some improvements, i.e. lane widening of the road, and also lane widening at each end, both at New Townsend Road and at Route 13. There is plans for lights. At Route 13, we are going to be putting in the conduit, everything for lights. At this point, it didn't, the warrants didn't require lights, but we are going to put the conduits in at such time that they do require lights. They can put them in at any time. But at both ends, we are having two lanes, turning lanes on both ends. Schools, fire, police, those, again, were addressed at the beginning of the project. To reiterate, the taxes of the people that are going to be in there will support those. I don't, I'm not familiar with what the taxes are in town, if you're over, under. Like any town, everybody needs more money. But it's, the socioeconomic of the fire, police, schools, were all discussed. And nothing was brought up at that time for those items. The town, this water seems to be a big issue for everybody. I understand you're all, and I'm trying to address the water. We're bringing from the tower into our development. We have adequate pressure, so it's all town water. We will not be taking, doing anything with drilling up there for wells. So the well, all water will be from the top, for the water tower up on Pope Road. Okay? Access, yes, there's an access on Northfield Road. There's a secondary access off of Pope Road for emergency vehicles on, goes down to Mass Highway on Route 13. To bring back some of our plans, we've gone through extensive reiterations, I think, going back twenty-seven years now, probably six or seven years with this project, trying to get access onto Route 13. Mass Highway didn't want anything on there, because there was a lot of problems on Route 13 with the hill. So we just said we'll have that access, the emergency access, only for Pope Road. We're paving Pope Road all the way up, in case they have to get in there. We'll be plowed as well. The sixty-six units and phasing is, we do show on the plans, Phase 1 and Phase 2, only because your growth bylaw, we have, we can only do so much as far as building. The sixty-six units are full buildup. So that's, there's no Phase 1, sixty-six, and Phase 2, 106. Sixty-six units are the total amount of building units. This was farmland at one time, long, long, long way before it was, when Walmart was there, I think it was, the same, same farmland at that location. We did have to bring that up as far as the Massachusetts MIPA, because they do have a, they do look at farmland, but if it's been stagnant for so long, more than five years, then you don't have to, it's deemed non-farmland anymore. The square footage of the units, twenty-four, minimum, we're saying on our, on the developments, 2,400 square feet. So they're not small. They're the nominal sizes. All 24. 24 will be the minimum.
Okay.
Okay, 24 and 00. Did I miss anything? This is under a cluster bylaw, so we're, if you look at the plans, some of the reiterations that we had were, we actually could get over 200 units in here, and still could support it by coming down off of Maple Parkway, because we do have frontage going down Maple Parkway and then coming down. As you know, there's a slope there. There's a lot of, there's some wetlands in there. So part of this is, we have designated fifty percent or more of open space, giving this, the lots are now 30,000 square feet in the area. are now 30,000 square feet in the area. This is our residence, so it's, minimum is 40,000 square feet in that area. So they just give us 10,000 for giving the town back half of our land for open space. We do have in the plans, which is, we have trail, trail markings, trail easements throughout the whole property, going from Northfield all the way down to Mass, Mass Ave for future trail easements. I think I've covered everything.
Just, just add two, two points. Kent, I don't think he mentioned that it's entirely sewered, so we don't, there'll be no septic or no influence on the, on the aquifers or the water system of additional septic systems. We will extend the sewer from Mass Ave up Maple Parkway and then into our development. So, one of the benefits to the town, not to Northfield Road, but to Maple Parkway, is that Maple Parkway will gain a sewer at the expense of the development. And I just did a quick calculation while I was sitting there, that with the town's tax rate, I believe is $18.32 a thousand. So if you took 66 houses at, new, new 2,400 square foot houses at, maybe somewhere between $400,000 and $500,000, they'd be appraised at each. It, it comes out to about a half a million dollars of taxes, so that the 66, the occupants of the 66 houses, who of course will put a demand on emergency services and on the school services, well, the taxes that they would pay would be somewhere around half a million dollars. So hopefully that, that, that equation would, would have the demands on the town offset, at least by the taxes that the people were paying.
So the sewer line is coming in the back way? Is that what?
The sewer line will come in Maple Parkway, White Street and Maple Parkway, into our property and then sort of cross-country through the, through some of the space that we leave open. And then will completely cover our development.
And is there some reason?
Excuse me, I'm sorry to, sorry to interrupt. Sir, would you mind taking the microphone out?
Oh, okay, sorry.
I apologize. Okay, and any, yes, any questions, if you could also come up to the microphone, that'd be fabulous. Thank you very much.
Sorry. So, you were asking about the sewer?
Is there a reason why a second egress couldn't be put on the other end versus more to be on the?
Well, when we started the project, our original plan from five years ago would have had the entrance come down the hill, not far from the border of the Walmart property and would have, had entered Mass Ave there. And our, on our initial submission to the planning board, I'm saying about five years ago, that was planned, was given over to, for comments to all the town departments and the emergency...
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I apologize. I don't generally moderate these meetings, so I'm a little new at this. In the, just so we can all hear, if you could, if, if you could address the board with your answers into the microphone?
Okay, we'll do it that way.
I apologize. And, and any questions also?
Okay.
Please take the time to come up and address it. I apologize. This is just what we need to do so folks at home on TV can hear us and so that everybody in the room can get the benefits.
All right. So, so the, the initial plan was in fact to have a Mass Ave entrance to the project. And when that was submitted initially to the town, to the planning board, who gave it over to the different departments and to their consulting engineers, the, they denied us the, the opportunity to do it that way for concerns of an entrance road at that location. And that's in fact what sent us to Northfield Road. So we, we didn't start with Northfield Road, but that's, that's where we wound up at the request of, of the planning board. So that was, I mean, your planning folks suggesting that we do it this way instead of that way. So those are my only other, those are my only other comments.
Mr., yeah, if you could grab the mic and take it with you, that'd be awesome.
To answer your question about the access, our access is only in this location. There's a, I think there's a pond right there, right over by the golf course. This is all wetlands in this location, so we couldn't put any access there. So the access, everything we put over here, that's our first access. Okay? The emergency access along, comes down Pope Road right here. And then the, the tank, the water tank is located in this location, which will then be brought in throughout the property. Sewer, I might as well bring that up as far as, bring these people up to date. Sewer at this point, sewer location, we're only allowed to go to this loc, this line, which is the current sewer district within your town, within the town of Lunenburg. So our, our manhole stops here. However, we do have it all designed all the way out to this location in such time that the town sees that they need more sewer availability to come down Northfield Road. Now that, that's good two reasons. Number one, there was no sewer along this whole area gravity-wise. And if you're familiar, familiar with your sewer in town, you have, I think, 20 pump stations within the town, which increases cost and everything else. Now I know you guys are outside the sewer district, so you probably aren't worried about that, but you said you just had a septic system. You know, 10, 20, whatever years down the road, sewer may, if you, if the town says we're going to increase that, that's a possibility. Sewer right now, this is all comes down this location and then comes down, down the hill, down Maple Parkway, down White Street, and then back into Mass Ave. All gravity. There was a lot of discussions with that. We originally had a pump station up here. The sewer district didn't want any more pump stations, so we did go through a pretty substantial design for sewer, which has been approved by the Sewer Commission at this point and been voted on for the, because it was gravity, not the pump station, which creates more revenue required for the, for the sewer district. I think that's it. I'm sorry.
Can, can you show me, I'm addressing you because it's, it's your stuff, exactly where on, is that on Northfield Road where the entrance is for your, your complex?
This is the, this is the old first block right here and I think the boy here is, he's located in this location.
And why is it you couldn't put a, another, another egress or entrance or exit down on 13? Once again, I, I don't understand why you can't put one on both ends.
We tried several times. This being Mass Highway, Mass Highway said no. They, if you know, the town owns streets and roads and then there's Mass Highway, the state owns streets and roads. There wasn't enough, you got lights here, lights here. Traffic coming down those location was not amenable to the, to the Mass Highway. We did do a traffic study based on that, and that's why we did, you know, the two locations as far as turning, you know, you got a stopping lane, turning lane, stopping lane, turning lane on, on the other side. Route 13 has a lot more conduit that we're going to be putting in for lights in the future, which I think will be sooner than later.
So you guys are putting in those traffic lights?
It'll be, it'll be the town. The town will be putting, yeah, well, we're, well, again, we're putting the, no, because Route 13 is a state road. So it'll be, I believe it's going to be the state, because it's going to be, it's a state road.
And you can get all of that stuff in there and build the foundations without having blast anything? But all that?
I'm not saying, again, if we, if this, I can't say that. I mean, right now, there's, there was some rock, some in this location, not to the extent that we found. This is all pretty much gravel in this loc, in this location, till in this location. Actually, it's till all the way back. And you get more of the, more of the rock when you get down in here.
So do you guys plan on doing any surveys for the houses that are there right now to ensure that?
If blast...
Is it the septic or the wells or the septic?
If blasting is, if blasting is required, it's state law that we have to do pre-blast surveys of every house in the, within, and I'm not a seismologist, but I, I know it's so many feet, they have to do a pre-blast survey wherever they're blasting.
You don't know how many feet that is?
I don't. I'm sorry. I mean, it's, I know it's state, it's, it's under state law that they have to do it.
Because when they built the Walmart development and then other development, nobody came to my house to do any survey.
If you don't mind me, where, where are you?
Northfield Road.
That's pretty far away for...
No, I'm right around here on the...
Yeah, I, I know, I know that they did them over, I know that they, I know they were here. I don't know how far.
Well, I just have to say that no one came to our house during the Walmart project and our well did collapse. And the amount of money that it would have taken to go after to say, yes, it caused this, we just went ahead and drilled another well, but I certainly don't want to have to do that again. So if, if I'm outside of your X number of feet and my well collapses again...
You can, under, I do know under the state law, you can request a pre-blast survey to be included in that. So if that ever comes to fruition, that can be requested. So if a person that's three miles on the road can request it to be included.
You're up here.
Okay, so who's going to pay for the pre-blasting survey? Is it the developer or would it be the resident? The developer would have to pay for that. When will we find out, when we would have to, when will we find out, when we would have to have this done prior to the blasting?
That would be...
I believe the fire department would notify. I'm not sure, Adam, I'm not...
Yeah, what, first of all, this is the first public hearing in, in the process to approve this project. There's currently a number of comments that are outstanding that still need to be reviewed. So, in the process of finalizing the approval for the project, there may be more information that comes to light. I imagine if it hasn't already been done, there's been some soil surveying done to design the drainage system. Some of that may inform in general what the soil on the site is and if there is the potential for blasting. When it comes time to start doing construction, if they do need to blast, they need to pull a fire department permit, they have to hire a certified blasting company. It's all a very lengthy process. My, well, in my experience, most of the blasting is going to be on the roadside, so they're going to know pretty much right at the front end, because that's, digging a foundation, they're not going to have to go too deep for most of these houses. It's going to be the areas where they need to put the sewer in to feed the gravity. So, it, it would, it would be at the front end of the project. And so when they begin clearing the site and when they begin digging, you would probably start to, to find out. I don't know what the permitting process for blasting is in the town of Lunenburg. I haven't had to deal with that in the, the few months that I've been here. I can follow up with the fire department and get some information on what their timeline is. Most of the fire departments I've dealt with, it's been somewhere in the range of 30 days because they have to file the blasting permit, they have to do the pre-blast surveys, and you can't do that in two days because you have to find a time when people are home, because generally you have to get, they'll, some, some companies will go into the basement and check the interior of the foundation, some won't. They're, and generally the person who does the survey doesn't work for the blasting company. They're a third party, so they're removed from the process. They don't have, you know, any investment in, oh no, this house is, you know, there was this crack and this crack. It's somebody who, that's all they do is, is that kind of survey, in my experience. So I can follow up with the fire department and find out what that looks like, have some information for you the next time the hearing is scheduled.
Could you also ask them to check and see if, when they do these surveys, if they are going to check the, per se, septic system rather than just inside the house, the foundation?
Mm-hmm. I, I can find out what the contents of the inspection would be.
There are certain criteria for them.
Yeah. I'm used to dealing with sewered communities, so that, you know, I, I haven't come across a septic inspection, but I imagine that would be part of it.
And I think we're putting the cart before the horse because we, we have done several test holes in this area and the roadway's designed with very little cuts and very little in, but as far as fills along the downhill side. So we're not cutting into this road. It actually equalizes as far, we equal, as far as cuts and fills, so we don't have any trucks going on and off the property. But everything here are within three or four feet right on the top of the surface. So it's not, we're not, you know, we're not cutting, you know, I know you're all thinking about this 25-foot cliff behind Walmart, but that's, you know, we don't have that. So it's, we, we have done test soil tests and I, most of them were down 10, 15 feet with, with no bedrock. We did have some big rocks in this location, but most of it was boulders, if you will. And you can, by the boulders, they can, are they a ramhoe, they use, you know, a, a excavator with a chipper on it. They won't blast it. Blasting is expensive. I mean, that, that's something that is not going to happen unless it's absolutely, positively needed.
Okay, anything else this evening?
I don't want to make this sound like it's an attack of any sort, but is this a done deal? Are we exercising this in futility? I mean, is this project set to go? Because from, from what his planning is saying and from what I've been listening to, it sounds like it's just a matter of dotting your i's, crossing your t's.
Well, I think, I, I don't want to speak for the board because I, I'm not a voting member, but generally, this is a subdivision. So, under Mass general law, if the applicant submits a subdivision plan to a town, any town in the state of Massachusetts, and complies with the rules and regulations that, that that town has established for the development of a subdivision, they cannot be denied. Now, if they are asking for waivers of any kind, if they're asking to derive or derivate from the regulations that are outlined, the board is not obligated to give them those waivers or relief from the regulations. But if they comply, the board does not have a vehicle to deny them the division of land and the construction of a road. They can however include mitigation measures, including access, to ensure that there is adequate room for traffic to get to and from the site, which the applicant is currently proposing. Again, there are some things that need to be reviewed and certainly considered as far as the design goes. And over the coming months, those will be done. But it's not, this is not, there isn't a subjective approval or disapproval that can be done. It can't, it, it's not, for example, a special permit under Massachusetts general law is subjective and the zoning board can find that the development is not in conformance or in harmony with the neighborhood. A subdivision is objective. If it, if A, B, and C are met and A, B, and C are required, the, it's approved. If the board chooses to not honor... If the board chooses to not honor that and vote to deny, it opens the town up to litigation, which ultimately, we would probably lose in the end, uh, with significant cost. So the project, exactly as it is, is not a done deal, but subdivisions in general, the way that the Massachusetts General Laws are written, if you can comply with the rules that the town has put forth, uh, there's, there's not a lot of denying subdivisions. Inadequate information, failure to be able to meet the requirements, all of these things can lead to the denial of a subdivision, but oftentimes, there, the applicants are able to meet their requirements. So we can work on shaping it, so it's as safe as possible, and so that the regulations that are outlined in the town's subdivision rules and regulations are met. Uh, but we can't say, you know, 66 houses and it, it's just not gonna fit in this area. That, that's not, it, there's no subjective decision on that.
And if I could add, add, Adam, a lot of your questions, if you didn't ask them, like for the blasting and the water and the houses and the phasing, you know, you wouldn't, I mean, that's why you're here, and that's why I'm here. So if there's anything, you know, a lot of these, again, when we started this whole thing, we started with 200 units out here. All without giving the town any, any land. So we've been at this for, through the preliminary stage, we did have a preliminary plan that was appro, approved back, uh, four years ago. So that's what we built on from that point. A preliminary plan is the very first start of this process. Yes, ma'am.
I live, my house, uh, J, uh, is right next to the Hirsch.
Right.
So that's up in this corner?
That's, uh, right here.
That's up in that corner. That's my house. Okay. A couple of years ago, Mr. Saliba hired people to come and log out the whole side of my house, because that was, belonged to Saliba's. Okay? So, they came, they made a disastrous mess of that whole property. It was months that they were logging that with these great big tree cutters and everything. I couldn't even hear myself think. The dust was horrible, the road was full of sand, they ruined my front lawn, and my son built, uh, 104 Otham Road, all those new buildings in there. The town of Lunenburg made him sweep the, the, the street every single night after everything calmed down. These people didn't have to do that. It was very dangerous, the motorcycles were going by, they could've skidded and killed themselves on that street. I stopped and talked to the guys that were doing the work, and they said, this is gonna be a beautiful park when we're finished. Well, you need to take a ride to my house. It is a disaster over there. There's stumps, it's debris, it's everywhere. It's horrible. And what about the, the trucks and stuff that they're gonna bring on Northfield Road? Back and forth, back and forth, all day long. It, it was, it was just horrible. And I can't even imagine what's gonna happen here. I can't even imagine. It's gonna be horrible. Now, is there gonna be an entryway alongside of my house?
No, you're over here.
But I'm, if you go by my house, I'm headed toward the golf course.
Right.
All right, on the, on the right, on the left-hand side, that's where they did all the logging. So that belongs to Mr. Saliba.
Okay, there's, there's nothing's been logged here so far.
No, but didn't you say that was going to be the entrance?
Is that gonna be an entrance going in there?
No, no, I don't know where. There's only some space between the golf course.
What, what is the number?
She's between the golf course.
My house is 919 Northfield Road, and right next to door to my house.
Rocky's right next to that.
Going toward the golf course.
What's your, what, what's your...
Which is right next to mine.
Mine is 919 Northfield Road.
I know. Well, is it Realty Trust? This is Realty Trust that's from this side.
What do you mean the Realty Trust? What's that?
There's, you, there's a parcel here, and then there's, your house must be right here.
She lives right next to the open space where they were logging, where they were taking that in and out.
There's a space between wherever that...
Is that gonna be an entryway going into that development?
No.
So there won't be any heavy, heavy trucks?
You gotta be farther down. Golf course, Vanessa's golf course. Right near the golf course. How far? 200, there's a, there's a little pond down there, you know.
In the back of the golf course? Yeah.
Right off the Northfield, on the left-hand side. So we're about 200 feet from that, from that pond, this way.
Coming toward my house?
You're going closer to the 13? Is that it?
Yes.
Further.
Yes. Right next to the, where that fire...
The golf course is here.
Okay. On the next house, on the next house to the golf course. Headed toward Route 13.
The golf course is here.
Okay. So start going toward Route 13 on the very next house.
She's right there. Right here. Looks like it. There's some other here. There's some land between you here. There must be one where they logged.
Where they logged, yeah.
Okay.
So that is gonna be an entryway going into the project. So there won't be any heavy, heavy trucks and stuff back and forth on Northfield Road every day, all day?
Yes, there will be some trucks, yes.
Where would they be going? If they're not going in that entryway?
We have an entrance further down, not in here, but it's further down the street.
So they'll be going by my house constantly, every day, all day?
How many trucks will be there?
Many, many, many. So, you guys don't live there, so you're just talking, you know, what you think. You're going home tonight. We're gonna live with this. It was absolutely horrible. So I am totally against it, and I've lived there all my life. I know the blueberry patch, I know Elfrid Hirsch, and I know all of the property. Well, Elfrid Hirsch owned many, many acres of a blueberry patch.
Ma'am, could...
And that's where you're gonna build.
Ma'am, could we get your name, please?
Ben Elgany, 89 years old.
Hi.
Josephine Smith.
Josephine Smith, and what's your address again?
919...
Thank you, Josephine.
She's further down.
Wait, any, any other, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna say for everyone else, there's a history of this. This has been going on for many years, predates, I think, all the members of the board, the process of this project. So this is the first public hearing that I'm part of, that most of us are part of. So we seem quiet up here right now, because we're waiting for our reviewing engineer to bring his concerns, and then we'll ask our questions. We're taking your initial thoughts right now. So don't think that we're not being thorough or anything of that nature. There's gonna be continuance to the public hearings, thought, certainly not over tonight. We're gonna address as many concerns as possible.
Any other, uh, public comment on, on the project, uh, for tonight? And then we'll turn it over to the board for some, if, any thoughts, and then we'll, uh, we'll, uh, we're gonna basically vote on the continuance, and then we will, uh, or for the extension, and then we will probably continue the public hearing. As the gentleman said earlier, it'll probably pick up again at the end of March or beginning of April. So any, any other thoughts right now?
I just have one more about the school system, because they're already overcrowded, and I know with them building the new high school, uh, I just know that the teachers are under a lot of pressure with the students that they have in their classes. They're, um, making cutbacks all the time. They don't have money for this, they don't have money for that. Um, I'm just afraid, what's gonna happen when you throw more kids into the school system, where they're already hurting to begin with? I'm really nervous about that for the kids, right? We need the kids for, to get their education, so, you know, they can take care of us one day, right? So I am nervous about that. So I don't wanna make it sound like it's all about the wells and the septic. It is, but it's also about the school system and the teachers and the, you know, what, what benefits we can provide for our children that's coming up into society. So I am also concerned about that as well.
As, as mentioned, there are regulations that govern the growth, uh, in the town of how many units can be put in, and that's why this is, is a phased project. And so all of the infrastructure planning that we do is supposed to be done in accordance with those growth calculations. Um, so in theory, the school, based upon its lifetime expectancy, should handle the growth of the town, uh, so that the number of residents in the town after X number of years is, is aligned. So growth calculations are taken into consideration when we're, we're building public infrastructure out.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other public, uh, thoughts? All right, I'm gonna turn it over to the board, and does anyone have any comments for this evening? We're likely gonna continue this, this hearing, um, but, uh, for this evening, is there any, anything anyone would like to ask of the applicant or discuss?
I would, I'd like, excuse me, to clarify, the, the 66, uh, homes, it was assumed by one of the, one of the residents in the area, there would be 120 cars. But you did traffic study. What, um, what are the typical trips per day for a single bedroom home? Six to eight?
Yeah, actually, I wanna say 4.4 was the number they used.
Four. So then it would be, it would be better than 250 cars every day?
Around six.
Right, right. They, they leave, they come back. So they're gonna go, they're gonna go by your house twice. Yeah. Right. Um, also, um, as Damon pointed out, um, none of us have been on the board as long as this project has been in planning. Um, and they've been before us a number of times, and there have been some, some comments, some issues, um, and they have been addressed, taken back and forth. Um, I still, myself personally, don't like the idea of a single access to this development. Um, we have a current dead-end length of 700 feet, and this single driveway to 66 homes is over 2,000 feet. Um, that just doesn't, I, I don't like that. Doesn't sound safe for the residents in this new development. Uh, the response time, if there was a connection from Route 13 to, to Northfield Road, the response times would be increased for the existing residents, and it would be increased for the new residents. There definitely are things that, there are always gonna be things that, that everybody's not happy with, and you just can't make everybody happy. But, um, we are going through the process, and, um, we're very happy to have you folks here. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, the only question that I had, um, was when, when the, um, the, the shared use land, uh, is there certain qualifications that go into identifying the land that gets identified for, um, for community use, uh, to qualify for the cluster development? Does, do you have to adhere to specific regulations about how that land could be used? So there, there, so you can have, you can have completely nonusable acreage, but that would qualify you for the cluster development?
No. No, it, it specifies percentage of land that is wetland, so you...
What about grade and stuff like that? Can, can you, you take a cliff and...
Only a percentage of it can be greater than, I think, 15%.
Okay, so...
It's not like, oh, well, here's all my junk land that I can't use anyway, so I'll give it to the town.
All right, so, so that was already taken into consideration in these plans? Okay, great, I just wanted to make sure.
The, the town of Lunenburg, Wal, Wal, Lunenburg Ward District has, plus some needs to use that as a possible well field in future, um, because that's, that's a prime argument that's come to us.
Is, is that documented in the plan as well?
It has at this point. It's, because he hasn't come formally to us.
Okay.
To the cluster, but that's, he has asked if we were willing to do such a thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I just look forward to looking through the plans. We're gonna close in here from our reviewing engineer, and I think, um, maybe if next time for the public hearing, you could have a map that zoomed out a little bit more, so the neighbors can see the, the entire area. There's still some question as to where it actually is. I think that might serve them to better comment on it. Other than that, I, uh, look forward to the next public hearing, and I hope you got, the public comes back to share your comments of that one as well.
All right. Uh, one more question, I'm sorry. Um, the, it, the issue came up of, uh, from the local residents of why there wasn't a connection on 13, and, uh, one, one of you folks said that it was, the Mass. Highway said no, and the other one said planning said no.
I was gonna ask the exact same question.
So...
Uh, no, actually, yeah, again, you guys were in private, 17 iterations of the life pretty good there. Um, one of the, one of the traffic reports that came back, Mass. Highway, that we came back and report, um, because of all the traffic down below, we're putting another satellite, because it would require probably another satellite for all the traffic. So it's not just traffic on ours, it's also traffic on Mass. Highway. Another satellites between those two satellites that are currently there, it couldn't, it couldn't be done.
It's, it's, Matt, it was really one in the same, I think, that, uh, the, the official procedure is to, is to least admit Osmonds to the, to the planning board. The planning board then gathers thoughts, advice, and requirements from a number of parties.
Sir, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could, you're saying some important stuff?
It's simply, the, the developer talks to the planning board, and then the planning board, as it sees fit, uh, consults with, uh, the relevant parties, one of whom was Mass. Highway. So it was, uh, Mass. Highway did not wish to have our project enter onto Mass. Ave. They conveyed that message to the planning board, who conveyed it to us. So it's, it's, I mean, it's, I don't want to seem, uh, like, technical, but, but that's, that's how the, uh, that's how the, uh, origin of the project with its entrance on Mass. Avenue, uh, was changed to being entering from, uh, Northfield Road instead.
Thank you. Uh, my understanding is there is a curb, curb cut application permit for Mass. Highway that is separate from something you'd submit to the planning board. Um, if the planning board said that Mass. Highway said no, then I would recommend that you submit the curb cut permit and see what they say to you.
Well, again, Matt... Wasn't just, and it wasn't just there, it was also, um, the town of Lunenburg. Um, and if I remember correctly, I think, I don't know if it was Mr. Rodikwens or, um... What?
Fire?
Okay. Uh, we could go back and look at the, at the minutes, but that's, that's what, again, that's what brought us, I mean, we had the preliminary, that was before the, even before the preliminary plan, um, was approved. That's, you know, when we had that. So there was, there was a lot of, and you look at the EIR on that, there's, I think there's 19 iterations of the plan.
And that's a DDP board?
Yeah. Thank you.
I just wanted to be clear on who, who said what.
Okay, thank you.
So, on that topic, is that something that we could get access to? Is a synopsis of the iterations and what the planning boards issue or with them, or is that something that is not readily available? Cause I mean, the, the information package here has some pieces.
I can certainly, I can certainly look back through the, the binder and see what's available as far as notes from technical review or previous iterations. It appears in reviewing the timeline that after the initial submission of the definitive, um, everything kinda went into stasis while the sewer issue got worked out over the past several years.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and it just continued being extensions through the planning board while they worked with the Sewer Commission to...
Mm-hmm.
A, figure out, can we do sewer? What's it gonna cost us? Where are we gonna put it?
Yeah, I was looking more for a distillation of major points, so that we don't go around in circles, like the, the issue around, uh, the, the Mass. Ave, the, the road, if, you know, if the, if a previous planning board said, you can't do it because of X, Y, Z, and then we say, oh, it would really be better if you had a second entrance.
Yeah, well...
We'd be going around in circles, so if we get a synopsis of those, it'd be good.
They do have an emergency access that is intended to equalize response times to the development in the event that the fire department or, or police department need it. Uh, my, you know, looking at the way that the, the road is laid out here, um, it seems like it would be a significant amount of additional roadway to construct. DOT is not necessarily the most welcoming agency as far as putting stuff on their roads.
Certainly not, yeah.
Like a 66-unit development between two traffic lights in a commercial area. Um, but I, I do have a note to check with, uh, both chiefs and the DPW director, um, to see what their recollection of the original set of issues with, with that entrance was. And, you know, we do have a, a significant binder at the office that I can review and try and come up with some sort of distillation of previous facts that I can contribute to the board.
Yeah, I just, I just think it would be helpful in the interest of time to not rehash anything and to, and to certainly not bring us down a path that had already been explored previously and we diverted from.
No, I, yeah, I think that's a reasonable request.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I would, you might wanna read the EIR, 'cause all those plans are in there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so you can see the chronological, all the way up to...
Evolution.
...approval, which got us to the preliminary approval.
Mm-hmm.
And then with the preliminary approval, that's when we go one-fourth in the definitive. So that, that... so that, that might help.
Mm-hmm.
To start.
Anything else on the board here tonight? Yeah, that, that reminded me, there is that commercial parcel, uh, along 13, which is at like 600 feet of frontage, um, and is that part of this cluster development?
No.
It is part of the parcel of land that is, uh?
It is, it's parcel, it's part of parcel of land because it's, we have to cut it off. It, it's actually a parcel, it's not a lot. So it's, the, there's a zoning line, the commercial versus residential, so the land itself was all contiguous from Mass Ave all the way to Northfield Road. So we have to cut that off, so that's the only reason we show it on the plan, that's the reason we show it as a parcel, not a lot, and that's not part of this project.
Doesn't belong to the?
It belongs to our, our proponent, yes, but it's not included.
In the project.
In the project itself, so when it comes forth for a, whatever, another commercial building there, that has to obviously come before you.
So when you say you can't get a curb cut now, when you will come back with the Dunkin' Donuts on that lot, you'd be able to get the curb cut then?
That's not my problem, it's, again, there's, there's actually, and, and, you know, we're kind of getting off base here a little bit, but I will say, I know that they, the owners from the Walmart and the, the same owners that, because this is obviously the same owners of that location, um, there is a cross access easement in that development from, from Walmart to this, to that parcel.
So you could actually?
So you could actually go through the lights.
Use the Walmart agents.
Right, that was, I mean, that was.
That'd be fantastic.
For, for commercial, but. Yeah, it's, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comment?
No, I think.
All right, well, uh, so our next order of business is going to be to entertain a motion on the extension request. I want to thank, uh, everybody who's here today to discuss this for, for coming out. I think this was a really good discussion, uh, with both parties involved and it was really good, I think, that we were, had the opportunity to, to, to get this level of discussion in tonight and get these thoughts into the, the process, so, uh, so thank you everyone. People can certainly contact my office if they have questions. And, uh, yeah, Adam's saying, uh, if anyone has questions, feel free to contact Adam at the, uh, planning board office and, uh, if, and he's happy to, to talk to you. All right, so, uh, I'd like to take a motion regarding the, uh, extension request, uh, put forward by the applicant. Do we have to set a date?
Yeah, so your choice is that the 23rd of March or the 13th of April per what the applicant was speaking about? So he's asking for the 13th of April?
I think you need to, uh, no, I think you need to ask your, your consulting engineer how much, how many, how much time you may need or?
Well, I think if the applicant's asking for the 13th of April, I would say six weeks sounds.
I don't want to step on his toes, but that's okay with him.
No, but I, I would hope that six weeks would be a reasonable turnaround time.
So, yeah, and if we, hypothetically, if we were to grant an extension for the requested six weeks and we were able to schedule it earlier, I, that's probably.
No, well, we could, yeah, you could grant the extension, but once you do the continuance, you can't, you can't make it earlier.
Okay, so we're also looking at hard date?
Correct, you have to.
Okay, okay. All right, so, uh, so April 13th is a request, any motions?
Make a motion to, uh, extend the request, uh, make an extension to April 13th.
Second.
Okay, uh, in, motion to extend and continue the public hearing?
Yeah, make a motion to continue the public hearing to April 13th.
Well, hold on, we have one motion on the table, you're gonna modify it to extension and continuance in one motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And that was at 6:35, correct?
Uh, oh, 6:30, 6, uh, 6:35?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thought I heard you say that.
All right, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna move to our next agenda item in just a moment, which is the Village Center District Bylaw and the Architectural Preservation District.
That's what I get for getting grabby, right?
Oh, yeah, that's. Hmm, nice package. It's a hip switch. All right, so we're gonna swing back into action here. So we have a public discussion, uh, for Village Center District Bylaw and the Architectural Preservation District. If you haven't picked it up already, there's materials on the table that, uh, in relation to both of these topics. Would it be okay to, so as a board, we haven't talked at all about the APD yet. Correct. Can we do a little board discussion of the APD first, or should we just do it in the course of the public discussion, like?
Yeah, I mean.
Hey, did we get confirmation that that's 60%? I don't know. 60% blaze?
Keep flipping.
No, I was, I was just making jokes.
Keep flipping.
Is it a move? All right, thanks everyone, uh, we're gonna, so what, what we have scheduled today is, uh, we're referring to as a public discussion, it's not an official public hearing, but it's an opportunity for us to get, you know, get extensive public, uh, comment, discussion, thoughts, involvement in, um, in the work that we've been doing in relation to the Village Center District. This, this isn't the first time we've, we've received public input and input from other boards on the topic, but, um, it's an important juncture in the process to, to get people's thoughts on how things are developing there and, and the thoughts they have about that. So we have two items, as I said, the Village Center District and the Architectural Preservation District. To start with, we're really just gonna start and focus on the Village Center District Bylaw first, and then when we wrap that up, we'll move to discuss the Architectural Preservation District, uh, Bylaw draft. So, um, the, so the Village Center District, just quick thing, is something that the board has been working on for quite some time now and, uh, there, the draft that you have in your hands, and I believe it's, this was drafted, was posted on the, the website for a while, it's been posted on the website for a while. This represents, uh, you know, this is, this is, we're several revisions into it, so this, this isn't, uh, this is a draft, it's not a rough draft, it's, it's, uh, come quite a ways, but that said, uh, let's, we'd like to, to hear what people's thoughts are on that and, uh, so let's open it up, uh, beginning with the public to, uh, share their thoughts on the Village Center District, please.
Good evening, I'm Larry Marshall from 42 Main Street and I have a couple of clarifications I'm looking for and a couple of comments. First of all, commend the board on taking this on because I think it's a worthwhile project to have a village district. Under the provision for special permits, I notice that single family homes, uh, requiring a special permit is quite, is opposed to being a, uh, used by right, and I question that as, you know, a village district would typically have homes, businesses, whatever mixed in, so I'm questioning that and if, if there's a rationale for that. In the provision for the prohibited uses, we have one-story buildings except for single family homes. I'm questioning the existing used buildings, if they change a use. So for example, let's say the parish hall for the church, which is a single-story building. Now, it's a grandf, I mean, first of all, it's allowed use because it's a religious building, but if that were to change its use into somebody wanted to do a commercial building there, does this disqualify it? Because it's, it's no longer, it's, I mean, the use is discontinued. Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Go ahead.
That's an easier one to answer upfront, um, no, because that building existed prior to the prohibition.
But the use is changing.
Correct, but it's, it's a non-conforming structure.
Okay.
So if I'm recalling the bylaw correctly and, and section six, you can continue to use, as long as you're not modifying an existing non-conforming structure.
You're gonna modify it.
Well, the exterior.
It's gonna be a huge modification, same thing with TC Passios.
Well, but you're, you're generally gonna modify the interior, so you're not modifying the structure, you're modifying the interior and, you know, we could put a fine point on whether or not that counts as modifying the structure, but that, for the intent of, of a non-conforming structure, it's an existing non-conforming structure that you're not modifying, you're changing the use. If the use is conforming, it can occupy the non-conforming structure without the, without alteration of the exterior walls.
Okay.
For all intents and purposes.
I hope we can make that clear in the, you know.
That's Mass General Law, so while it may not be clear in here upon someone coming and speaking to myself or the building inspector about the intent to occupy, that's, and most people.
If you're in the language to say newly constructed.
Yeah.
Single-story buildings.
Yeah, that would be.
Because certainly we're not gonna require them, would not require them to put a second story on there to make it a commercial building.
Exactly, that's, when I'm reading it, that was, that was one of my concerns about changing the use disqualifies pre-existing. Under signage, most of it's fine, under sandwich boards, flags, now the portable signs, part of it is they have to be taken inside each night. We have numerous things downtown that, uh, have promotions going on, the church has promotions going on, the Boy Scouts, I have a Boy Scout supporter sitting on the board that I think is, is sitting up there, but, uh, we, we put signs out on, they're on private property, but they're within the design district. To try to put these out and take them in every night, which is what you're requiring under this bylaw, is onerous, okay?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but those might fall under number five, under the signs, banners with a specific date of expiration?
Not a banner, you specifically define banners under your definitions.
Okay.
So these are sandwich boards that we put out.
Are these signs you're talking about, ones that get approval, approval from the zoning officer or just?
No, we put them on private property, because, I mean, we used to put them on the town property, I, I'm speaking specifically from my experiences of Boys, from the Boy Scouts, but I know the church does this too. Uh, we used to put it on the church property, the church doesn't want us to do it anymore, so now we have private residences that we put these on, that they allow us to put them at, for example, we do a pancake breakfast twice a year. We have a sandwich board that goes up, and Girl Scouts do a similar thing, okay? What you're saying to us now is we would have to go every night and take these off and put them away. I think that could be rephrased somehow.
Well, and the intent of this is for a business, so, you know.
But that's not what it says.
And I understand that and it, it's tough to put that much specificity and to conceive of every possible consideration. You're talking about a charitable organization who's advertising a fundraiser.
So say that.
And, well, but again, it, it's, it's one of those things where the school isn't necessarily a charitable organization and what happens with something like this is it's a zoning bylaw, so the enforcement of it is generally by complaint. The, the zoning officer doesn't walk around and say, I'm gonna look for zoning violations, and this is language to support their ability to enforce that, and we can look at adding language for municipal or charitable organizations.
How about the other way around, just qualify 11 with business, with the words business-related? So just start it off and say, business-related sandwich board signs.
Yeah, we could do that.
I would also ask the question that.
So that says, anything that's not business-related doesn't, isn't, fall under this guideline.
Is the right word or is it commercial?
Can I ask the question, is the why we have that there in the first place, are the signs hurting anyone at night? The banners hurting anyone?
I'm wondering if it was a, the.
Exactly.
It seems like a recycling.
I don't actually remember the, us discussing them being taken in at night, actually.
We had a fair, we had a, a few minutes of that discussion.
I don't remember that one.
We talked about the sandwich boards being in the sidewalks and the minimum requirement of frontage and, and walkability, I think that might have been.
I didn't remember the at-night conversation, it seems like it would be recycled from our previous time bylaws, maybe where that language came from.
May, yeah, I mean, maybe if we just change this to make sure they're not in this, in the sidewalk, I mean, it says within the property lines, is that, is a sidewalk?
So it's already off the sidewalk.
So, so maybe we could just get rid of that, I mean, I don't.
That's, that's fine with me.
I'd feel fine with striking number 11, I mean, since you brought it up, it does make, yeah.
Right, again, it's just one of those things trying to avoid conflict down the road.
Yeah, after the comma, as long as they're properly weighted and taken inside each night.
Just get rid of the end, are taken inside each night.
Yeah.
I think that's safer than trying to do it with commercial, cause in fact, the same thing that's, it's also permitting the sandwich boards for non-commercial, so if we can just hit.
And honestly, we're, we're all looking at the district thing, I don't know if it extends down to, uh, Conrad's or not, if, does it go that far?
Uh, yeah, just for anyone listening at home right now.
That would eliminate his sign out front, that, you know, it doesn't go that far.
Just to verbally describe the area to people listening, it goes, um, Mass Ave from the Brooks House to Marshall Park, so doesn't make it all the way to Conrad's.
Okay.
Lancaster Ave, uh, just past the gazebo, uh, Lemester Road, um, halfway between the gazebo and West Street, and then Main Street to the intersection with Oak Ave and Highland Street, so not too large of a district.
And my last comment was on, under Village District Campus Development, uh, the number one A, newly constructed building, building facades for non-residential first floor use shall have a transparency of at least 60% for all facades, wholly or partially addressed street frontage, sidewalks, or public space. I mean, this says to me that if somebody wants to build a building and do total glass on the first floor, that's what we're encouraging, and that doesn't seem like a village district to me. I mean, it's.
I can respond to that because I just, uh, last meeting, they asked me to do a study of what a building would look like in this district and we can bring that attention later, but I did, at that point, wanted to bring up that 60% was a lot and I found that maybe somewhere in the 40% is more, um, reasonable. But the reason for encouraging glass on the first floor is to make sure that's an inviting space, you can see the activity going on inside, um, and it's not a closed-off, um, offensive.
Let's picture a professional office, a lawyer wants to come in and put up a professional building that's going to look like a colonial house, which would be something I would think we would encourage in this district. You know, for them to put up something that looks like a colonial house with 60% transparency on the first floor would be ridiculous.
Yeah, it is a lot. But, uh, did you put that information in there, packets to the images?
I'd prefer to something to say not more than X percent of transparency.
Yeah, so, so just so, one, so I, your, yeah, your concerns are, are well-taken and I guess, I think to understand here, I think, this is great feedback, we're open to, to, you know, working to find a, the right number here. One of the, the goals of, of the bylaws to encourage mixed-use development and some level, like you, commercial development, like professional offices, small retail, that sort of thing, and so if you think of some of the, the downtown areas, uh, whether you're talking about like, uh, a downtown area like, let's say, Air or like, let's say, Groton or whatever, um, for that type of small commercial, even, even with a small commercial, and many times, yes, you, you do want the ability to, to do something like a traditional kind of colonial walk-up type thing, but in many cases too, you kind of want that, you know, plate glass exterior that, that is, Adam was saying, kind of creates that open space for, uh, commercial activity and draws people into restaurants and, and retail and whatnot. And the thing to think about it is, is people build, they're not building. And the thing to think about it is, is people build, they're not building just for the immediate use. It's, it's to build for whatever, the X number of years when, when the first use is done and the next use goes in. So, so, we appreciate the thoughts, and we may have the number wrong here, and you make great points as to why we should reduce it. And may, but that's, I just want to convey the spirit, sort of animating that.
Yeah, and I can agree with that, and I think maybe that falls more under your special permit planning board approval site, I mean, the building design or something like that. I mean, you used Groton as an example, and I'll give you Groton as an example right back. I was in banking with Concord Cooperative Bank, and we built a bank in Groton, and we could not put windows on the front. We had to design it so that all the major windows were in the back of the building, and the front was designed with regular win, you know, residential-type windows in the front, so it looked like a colonial-style home.
Yeah, and again, not to try to argue with your point, because I agree with you, but the 60%, which is a high number, we started with a state model bylaw, and they actually had the 60%, and we kind of carried it along because it sounded right at the time, and then I did the study, and like, that is, that's a lot, so.
And the other problem with that is minimum-
Yeah, we actually have expressed concerns.
It's a minimum, like I said, I'd rather see a maximum. Say, you can't do more than-
We could do a range, I think.
Yeah, I think the idea with the minimum was to not have someone come in and, you know, put a bar in that has that one little window.
I was gonna understand this. If you, if it was a bar-
Yeah.
You're gonna want visibility into that bar, so you can see what's going on. Okay? But maybe you move the bar into the special permit, and, and it may already be, I don't know. I mean, you move the bar into the special, restaurant into the special permit, and then you have that authority over them.
And you had the question earlier about the single-family home special permit. That was because with the reductions in site frontage and site square footage that we're allowing for in the district, we want to protect against a developer coming in and just putting up a slew of single-family homes on a certain property, so that's why it was under special permit as opposed to by right.
I can understand that one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Robert Eversole, 94 Main Street. Thank you for finally being able to hold your twice-before-scheduled meeting. And I see that you've added another meeting in March to have additional input, and I appreciate that. And that, great that it's televised and that it'll be repeated. So, I've said it before, and I'm gonna say it again, my only concern when I talk about my comments are unintended consequences. Part of what zoning should do is to provide as much specificity as possible without limiting too much, so that people know what they're going to be able to do, and for the people that live in town know what is going to be going on around them. So, when looking at the various uses, you're effectively creating a commercial district in a much larger area. We just need to know that that's the case based on the uses that are allowed by right, including restaurant, retail, professional office space, and multiple commercial uses. I'm not saying that's necessarily bad, but we have to understand that we're moving from residential to commercial for allowable uses. And as was said before, in the real estate world, commercial is the highest use of the property compared to residential, because it's usually worth more, and eventually, people will do that, which is the intent of the Village bylaw. But we have to understand that we're gonna be changing the character quite often from residential to commercial. I would also caution us from relying on either the special permit process or the design review process to say, "We'll take care of it then." We recently had a situation where the Zoning Board of Appeals had the development of the stone farm into a gas station, which was denied, which is what I, I believe that that was the case, but that was an allowable use by special permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, if it's an allowable by Zoning Board of Appeals, we have to assume that it will be done somewhere within the district. You rely on them to say, "Where in the district?" Certainly, but we have to say, "That's also an allowable use, which includes multifamily homes, private club, which is effectively like a bar." So, the guidelines need to make sure that we protect against what we don't want, one of those uses, to go beyond what would be good for Village District. A lot of Village Districts have a liquor establishment, a bar, a restaurant, coffee shop, and that's part of the vibrancy of that. The other caution I have, which is the sword that cuts both ways, is that the parking requirements, we don't have parking in the center of town, you require parking to accommodate the uses. As a result of that, when a use changes for a property, you're going to be seeing parking lots show up in the residential area now that will become commercial, and it'll now be parking lot. And that's something you're gonna have to do, but that's something we have to really consider, is that the impact that we want on the town? Under the design guidelines, I know you're gonna be talking about the historic preservation proposal with the town bylaw, I would actually hope that there would be a way under the design standards or some way in the zoning to refer to that process. Certainly, town meeting has to take two votes. This is a 2/3 vote, bylaw change is a majority vote, and, but people may want one or the other, and my understanding is that the, the sense from some of the discussions is that we would be doing the Village District bylaw and a protection of the district. I just want to make sure that there's some coordination of that process, even though it was currently proposed to have two different boards, the planning board, actually, three, the planning board would be involved, the zoning board would be involved, and the historic preservation board would be involved.
Yeah, Bob, just to address that point, I think it's brought up at the last meeting, so we won't address the other points later, I just want to get that one right, that's hot. We're, the, the plan right now, as we bring these to town meeting, is the architectural planning district is gonna go first. The, if that fails to pass, this will not be, this will be withdrawn, or whatever the right word is, so it won't even be voted on unless the APD passes.
Okay, thank you. Just jumping back to the sandwich board signs, I believe those are currently covered by the town's signed bylaw, because there's been times, as was mentioned about zoning by enforcement, zoning by complaint, and I believe that that's been an issue, is banners, flags, and other things put up without a permit by the building inspector. So, it's already regulated, so you may want to go back and see how that coordinates with that. I'd also echo the 60% number. My concern, you covered the newly constructed building facades for non-residential, so is that a newly constructed building? Or if somebody renovates the facade of their building, does it then have to go to 60%? Because I actually went on the assessors' website, they have pictures of all the properties in the district, and except for the commercial and the church and the town hall, everyone is well below the 60% threshold. So, my concern, somewhat going into the historic preservation, but that you would be having a situation where people would be changing the facade to, of existing structures.
Yeah, so just, so, that's a totally legitimate thing, and something we should definitely think about. Just to be clear, I think the scope of that 60% as it's in there now, which we are gonna definitely take into account, is within the campus developments, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect non-campus developments.
Okay. And then the only thing about that as well is that if you were to, to a campus and a civic use is a town hall, and if we were to build a town hall within that campus, would you have that many windows in a town hall? So, and that's a non-residential use, so this is the whole concept of unintended consequences. I support the concept, I'm, I'm leery of, of implementation without a lot of planning, so, thank you.
I guess that would be transparent government, though.
It would, yes. So, do you want me to go through the little study that I did, or if anyone else has a comment first?
Yeah, any other, this is great, great feedback, any other public comment?
Jamie Toll, 147 Peninsula Drive, but I'd also like to speak as the Chair of the Building Reuse Committee. One of the, one of the things that I kind of look through this with an eye toward is, while I understand the balancing of protecting the Village District, I also am concerned with the attracting reuse candidates for the existing town-owned buildings. And one of the things I wanted, I want us to consider are the, the discussion of the 5,000-square-foot area in all three of, of Section 5, in terms of by right with special permit and prohibited. Three of the existing buildings that we're responsible for determining reuse for are larger than 5,000 square feet, and the, and the Passios, which might become part of our charter, is considerably more than 5,000 square feet. And I'm just concerned that we balance the concern for what uses become available with what we can advertise and attract in terms of potential uses. So, I just, I'd like that to be kind of considered. I think there, there may be retail uses, for instance, that are larger than 5,000 square feet that would still be acceptable. And I certainly am, am fine with, with that being a special permit situation, but, you know, prohibited might be a little strong, 5,000 may be a number that we picked, that if we looked at our existing buildings, for instance, the Ritter is, is a little, I believe it's 6,000, and the, the town, the old primary school is somewhere in the 7,000 to 8,000. So, we, we may just want to kind of keep that in mind as we do it, and maybe attack that either by having a special consideration for town-owned existing buildings, or, you know, taking into consideration the, the size. Also, to, to Mr. Eversol's point, I think parking, especially if we're gonna use it as an attraction for retail, parking is certainly a consideration that we'd have to consider, both in terms of parking per square feet and just parking in general downtown. And they, both of those deserve quite a bit more discussion, as I'm sure you're aware.
So, just, on that, on that point, that, that's a similar one that we, I think we had discussed before, and we talked about potentially adding a new construction clause to C, which was the, the prohibit, prohibited uses. I think that would cover us for building reuse, if we remove the, if the, if the prohibited use was directed only towards new construction, which I thought was our intent. We didn't want someone to come in and build a gigantic retail space in the Village District.
But certainly, we used to have existing buildings to be encouraged.
We don't want to inhibit the reuse of the existing buildings.
So, that's a, that's a good point. Can I ask a sort of adjacent question for, for Jamie and you? So, these are good, good points you bring up. As I read this prohibited here, it's retail operations with more than 5,000 square feet, so I think that's specifically retail as opposed to, let's say, office or other commercial things. Do you, uh, just, what, just out of curiosity, like, what kind of retail operations might you envision that might occupy more than, than 5,000?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, I mean, one of the things that I think of is perhaps a Trader Joe's, maybe.
Yeah, and even, for example, I just went around town and took the square footage of several buildings. For example, the post office in the center of town has a footprint of 6,600 square feet. And even the CVS over by Whalen, 12,900 square foot footprint. So, if you think of the scale of those buildings.
And, you know, again, having kind of had this discussion with you guys, I, I think part of it was, there was concern that some of these smaller lots could support a 12,000-square-foot CVS, and that that might be not the village-center-character type of business that they would want. So, and I think that, and, and again, please feel free to correct me if I, if I have interpreted this incorrectly, but it was retail, a use was 5,000 square feet. So, if you, if the Passios remained standing, and someone purchases it and decides that they have a number of retailers that they want to put in there, they could have 50,000 square feet of retail, but it would end up being 10 or more retail spaces. Not, so it's not a gross percent, a gross floor area of retail of 5,000, it's per use to sort of eliminate the possibility of, you know, Walmart. And I don't think Walmart's gonna abandon where they are, but sort of deciding, oh, well, we like 50,000 square feet, and the Passios is about that, so let's just buy the building and, you know, have downtown Walmart to go along with, you know.
I think you're right on how we got to the 5,000, but I also am leaning towards Ken's comment of, I think that should be for new construction.
New construction.
I feel like that would protect us, like we intended.
Because the other one's already covered under special permit, right? So, if you do want to use it from, with more than 5,000, whether it's existing or not, you'd have to get a special permit for that. So, we do have some regulation over it.
Yeah, in, in response to your comment, Adam, I, I don't necessarily disagree, but I think that attracting a developer or retail entity that has 10 separate, you know, we'd be talking to a mall builder if you were talking about some, one buyer with 10 retail.
Yes.
And they're gonna look for an anchor store if they're gonna build a mall. In one of our earlier building reuse meetings, we did in fact look at the Passios, and I hate to just center on that one, and say that one of the possibilities was to split the Passios into three entities and build some parking to support those three entities. But even in that case, those three entities, all of, all three of those buildings or sub-b buildings that would be part of the renovation would be larger than 5. I think they ranged from 9 to 15, or something like that.
And, yeah, so, so what you're saying, Ken, is C should say, new construction of retail operations with more than 5,000 square feet of gross floor area on any individual floor?
Yeah, I, well, I think we would really want to just qualify C's primary statement by adding in the new construction clause.
Oh, so, following uses are-
Are prohibited in the Village Districts for new construction.
Except for three, which, if C 3 is in respect of the new construction. But the Passios would be that, that, that larger.
Oh, yeah, you're right. So, you'd have to add the new construction qualifier to-
Yeah, and I mean, I guess, really, you're only talking about 5,000-square-foot footprints.
No, you also, well, you also-
Because it's per, per floor.
Yes.
So, you could theoretically put in a 15,000-square-foot use, as long as it was spread over a stack, as opposed to-
But again, that, that, it wouldn't be prohibited, but it would still require a special permit, so it would, it would be subjected to review.
Mm-hmm. So, points taken. Do you want to take this offline and noodle it a little bit? I think you understand the goals we're, we're trying to hit here, maybe between now and then.
I, I'm, and, and I'm, I don't know, I feel like I'm just not getting all of, you know, retail use greater than 5,000 is allowed by special permit.
Mm-hmm.
Retail operations with more than 5,000 square feet of gross floor area on an individual floor are prohibited.
That was because we're trying to stack it vertically.
Yeah, okay, so you're, I see what you're saying, so-
We didn't want a big-
With the exception of reuse of an existing structure, or something to that effect.
I think the intent was to maximize the exposure of businesses on the street level. Go along with the 60% exposure, so you could see what's in.
Yeah, let me, let me noodle that a little bit, and I'll have something for next week.
Thank you. I just want to balance the, the reuse possibilities and the broadest ability to attract with the preservation of the historic and the-
And one of the, one of the side things that came up that we really have to get included in here is addressing the difference between- is addressing the difference between new construction and renovation for commercial use. So that definitely is something that we should qualify in here, particularly with regards to the glazing.
I'm sorry, with regards to what?
The glazing, the front glass and so forth. And we've already talked about not really knowing what the right number is for that percentage. And I think that the drawings are really helpful in making that clear.
Just another comment while we're on this topic of square footage is, maybe I'm just reading this over too quickly here. So mixed, so we have by right mixed use containing less than 5,000 per proposed use, multiple use, commercial use containing less than 5,000 per proposed use, that's fine. Special permit, we have retail use greater than 5,000 square feet, so that would require a special permit.
Mm-hmm.
Then we have the prohibition at the bottom. What's, maybe this is fine. We don't have any special, so if it's commercial but not retail, it's capped out according to what I'm reading here, the use is capped out at five. Am I reading that correctly?
Per individual proposed use.
Yes, you are technically. And I guess if you wanted to, if you wanted to be consistent, we could add a special permit for non-retail uses greater than 5,000. If somebody were to want, maybe there's some office use that's 30,000 square feet that really wants to be in the Ludenberg Village and.
It's a serious office.
Yeah, I know, but, you know, with Passios, maybe that's something that works for someone in some manner.
Especially with like medical or.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't know if it's something that we even want to worry about since we're allowing retail uses greater than 5,000 by special permit. You know, with a mixed use or mixed commercial, do you want to get into that same realm? I'm trying to imagine the kind of commercial, the kind of non-retail commercial that we have and having it be the, I mean, hair salon, massage, therapy, those kind of things greater than 5,000, yeah.
IBM?
You going to complain if IBM puts an office in the center of town?
Well, that probably wouldn't be one of her, that wouldn't be one of the allowed, like we have retail, professional office, personal, so professional office space, I'm not talking about 30, but, you know, that could, I could see a large law office, large dental or medical practice. You could push, what, seven? I don't know. I don't know that, I guess, you know, restaurant, I don't, I guess.
Restaurant's not capped unless it's part of mixed use and, you know, do you want?
Oh, it's not capped unless it's part of mixed use, okay. Or unless it's part of multiple commercial use.
Yeah, exactly. So unless, if it's a standalone restaurant, there's no cap. Once you introduce it to another, you run into the cap. And that, you know, that's why I'm saying, you know, maybe it's worth it to have non-retail commercial uses greater than 5,000.
By special permit?
Yeah. You know, and if somebody comes in and is like, oh, we want to build 12,000 square foot McDonald's, they can just say, well, that's not really what we envisioned for our Village District, so it's not in harmony, you can march along.
So would it be easy to just change retail use greater than 5,000 to any commercial use greater than 5,000?
Well, yeah, we just got to be careful, any of the ones that are allowed by right.
It would be a number 10.
Yeah, number 10.
So a mixed use containing greater than 5,000 square foot space or mixed use commercial. So it would just kind of be a catch-all to add those two in.
So it'd be like any of these, whatever uses, one through, any of the by right, can we just say any of the by right uses, well, I don't know, you get what I'm trying, it's not any commercial, it's any of the ones that we're allowing by right, we're basically just saying, you can pick from that list. I just think we need to wordsmith that so we don't, even the, yeah, I think that's fine.
Allowable uses in over 5,000 square feet within a mixed use or mixed commercial use development.
Oh, does it have to be within mixed?
Well, yeah, because these aren't capped. So you could have a 7,500 square foot office that was on its own.
Oh, by right?
Correct.
Okay.
So we cap the retail because generally, you know, they can occupy some of these existing buildings as these other uses. And the idea was to, you're not going to get a lot, I mean, the national professional office, you know, there's not going to be a, you know, it doesn't have the same stigma moving into an area.
Yep.
The office is going to blend a lot easier than a retail use where they want to come in and stamp down their signature building.
Yes.
In most cases.
Different traffic patterns, all that.
Correct, yeah.
Well, yeah, in the interest of unexpected consequences, though, I mean, that does say that for a professional office, it can come in at any size that it wants to.
And I think that the.
Including huge?
Including what?
Huge.
As long as it's in conformance with the design bylaw and all the other fun stuff we got there, yeah, I mean, they.
Yeah, and that kind of.
Order their sandwiches locally.
The study that I did, I think it covers some of this stuff.
Okay.
So last meeting, I was asked to go through the bylaw and come up with, number one, a graphic of what a Village District building could look like. I believe there's copies over there. But also, I just went through and looked at many of the properties in the center of town and tried to do parking layouts on them, see what would actually fit, focus mostly on the town-owned properties because those are the largest properties in the center of town.
This pro bono professional work done by you for the town? Wow, thank you.
But anyway, after analyzing the draft, the limiting factor for build-out of the vast majority of the included properties is the ability to provide appropriate parking for the intended use, which we've been talking about the whole time. The little design that I did there shows approximately 5,000 square feet on a first level and space above for between one and three apartments to exist. If that building, hypothetical building, which closer to them was a Brooks House, if that had office space on the first floor or retail space, the parking requirements to go along with that plus two parking spaces for each of the residents above, you're still looking at needing around 18 to 24 parking spaces to go with that building. If the same building had approximately 140-seat restaurant, a mid-sized restaurant, which is appropriate for 5,000 square feet, you'd need for that, for the employees, for the residents above, 45 to 50 parking spaces at least. So parking spaces, I believe our bylaw says, right now it says 300 square feet per parking space or something of that nature. So very quickly, that starts adding up to be three times the square footers of the building itself. And given the tight nature, most of the parcels in the center of town and your ability to do a good parking layout there is probably going to be single-loaded, it's going to be really inefficient, and it's going to be tough to accommodate even the most meager parking requirements. So in conclusion of that, with the vast majority of these parcels being under an acre, a lot of them being a half acre and a quarter of an acre, the parcels that we're talking about in this district, they're going to hit their physical boundaries long before they're going to hit the 5,000 square feet number that we've applied to the district.
Based on parking constraints?
Based on just lot constraints and what that site has a potential to be built out to.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Did you, so as you looked at this, so in our parking requirements, we sort of have this, these provisions that allow for parking or, for lack of a better word, is that, how much does that, how much or how little does that alleviate the situation?
That would alleviate some of the situation, but you still need either the town to step in and put a parking lot in or put another, again, it's probably going to be the town because we own the parcels of most of the land. So again, those are going to go out for request for proposal, so we'll have additional say in what happens on those parcels. But it's probably going to take a development on one of those pieces of town-controlled land to contribute those bonus parking spaces that we're talking about.
So this is great stuff. So talk to, so again, you look in your example, what was the square footage of the commercial, of the building?
So the first floor was 5,000 square feet. And then up above, this is the next part of what I studied, was this kind of interplay between our zoning, the international building code, and accessibility standards. And it kind of creates an intersection of economy of scales, per se. Because we've required that a second story be installed on these buildings. So what do you do with the second story? A retailer office use is going to require an elevator to serve that space. Most likely, whoever is developing the property is not going to spend the money to put in an elevator for a 5,000 square foot footprint. You usually see that closer to 10,000 square feet. So it's kind of a squeeze point there. So most likely, up above a 5,000 square foot footprint, you'll end up with residential units, whether it's apartments, condos, or owner-occupied space. In that situation, you're probably looking at 2,000 square feet would be a large condo or apartment, so it's going to be less than that. So you're either most likely going to see a two-story building or a three-story building, but you'll see the mass of the building get smaller as you go up. You're not going to end up with a big box of a building. Certainly, the second and third floor won't occupy the same footprint as the first floor of the building. For the two residential units up above, that's advantageous because you can still work under the residential code, less restricted requirements for the rise and run of the stairs, they take up less room, but you still see two means of egress for that, for that unit, for both units, really. You can get to a third residential unit, but that turns into a multifamily building, so then the rise and run gets bigger, the stair takes up more space, more precious space than that first floor. And then the addition of a fourth unit or more starts bringing you into the need for an elevator or units on the ground floor to meet full ADA accessibility standards. So you're kind of in this squeeze point between a big building and a typical building. And before you start seeing that elevator, I think you have to get much closer to 10,000 square foot footprints and the near 100 parking spaces to go along with such a use. So I would be really surprised to see more than a handful of sites here that can support anything more than 5,000 square feet to begin with, if they can get that high.
Yeah, so I guess, so what was the, so what do you, so in this example, what was the square footage? You describe a situation where the parking, what was your exact example, just square footage use and parking requirements total?
So we have our parking requirements by, well, for retail or offices by square footage. One space for 400 square feet, so you get, for 5,000 square feet, you'd have 12 and a half spaces plus employees at the busiest shift.
Right, so just walk us through, I just want to, you know, it's really helpful. What's really cool about what you did is you take in the formulas and you said, here's an example, it's this, it's this, it's this, and here's how much parking you did. Can you just run us through the example, it was 5,000 retail, 4,000 residential or whatever, and here's the amount of space? Just because that helps, for me, that's easier for me to get my head around than all the formulas.
So again, that building, 5,000 square feet on the first floor, we call that retail. We said that was going to be 400 square feet to a parking spot. So for every 400 square feet of building, you have a parking spot. So for 5,000 square feet, you get 12 and a half spaces.
Yep.
Plus your employees on the largest shift, so whatever that is, two to four, I would imagine, could be more depending on what you're doing.
Call 17 or whatever.
Yeah, and then you're going to have, for every unit up above, two parking spaces for each of those units.
You assume two, did you assume two units above or?
Yeah, I said two to three, depends on, so that's how you start adding up. And then quickly, the number kind of explodes when you change it to restaurant because you have a lot more people going to the same space.
Yep.
So you're really, again, the physical makeup of the town center is going to be prohibitive to a lot of intensive, it's not going to turn, we're not talking about fundamentally transforming the center of town because it just won't support intensive commercial development, even though we're not allowing that really in our language, but even without that.
So there's some natural constraints.
There's natural constraints. So we say 5,000 square feet, but I think there'd be, even in that limited number of parcels, that would be good for 5,000 square foot space.
So let's take that example of retail, so you said it's about 20, for the residents and the retail use, the 5,000 square feet, it's about 20 spots and how many, what's it, 300 square feet per spot, you said?
Yeah, that's our bylaw, it's probably going to take up more than that.
Or 400 square feet.
Oh, oh, per lot. Per physical space, yeah.
So it's what, 6,000, call it, call it 12,000 square feet. So basically, you're talking about a third of an acre.
Just in coverage.
Just for the parking lot.
Yeah.
And then you get into landscaping and offset and all that stuff, so.
So more likely, you'll see a small shop, maybe 1,000 square feet, maybe 2,000 square feet, a couple parking spaces, owner-occupied space above maybe, or an apartment.
Yep.
You're really not going to see a lot, it's not going to all turn into 5,000 square foot.
Yeah, I mean, there might be, are there any parcels that would support that?
There's a couple of two-acre sites, a couple of three-acre sites, but.
Is that what you'd really need to support, a third of an acre of parking?
No, 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 but I'm talking for like a restaurant or something like that.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Or even, we talked about these campus things, really, I think that's going to be limited to the town-owned properties to get a campus.
Gotcha.
Well, and if you're talking about a third of an acre of parking for, you know, a 5,000 square foot footprint that has two residential units above, you know, you're talking, and you're talking about a half acre lot, you throw a third of an acre in a 5,000 square foot building on a half acre lot and it's starting to look tight.
Yeah.
Can you make it work, depending on where the building is, but?
I guess what I would say, though, is, I mean, it's, that's not, this is good news, bad news, I would say. I mean, in some ways, a business of the nature that Damon outlines for us, a couple of those, you know, that would start to transform the character, you know, in possibly a positive way, while, you know, not bursting into seams like the, even though this isn't certainly the biggest thing one could imagine, it's pretty good size. We don't have anything that I can think of like that. I mean, the closest thing to this would be the anchor of Village Center now, the, you know, the corner, the set of uses by the corner store and Town Hall. I don't know, I'll told that whole complex is probably, what, 10,000 square feet?
I think it's more than that. I think they, on the assessor's map, I think they lumped the post office and the bank and the convenience store all together and it's like 30,000 square feet or something like that. So it's tough to tell what the individual pieces are, and there's two stories there.
Yep.
But total square footage sticks in my head of 30,000 something for that parcel.
30,000, yeah.
That's everything.
But as I say, it's also about three-quarter dozen uses.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I think this is a really, I don't know, for my takeaway from this is, first of all, thank you for putting this together because this really helps me visualize a lot better what this would be like. I mean, I think, I haven't done, you know, it'd be interesting now for me to go back and look at some of the parcels like you have and so I can get a sense too, like how many places it would fit, but, yeah, how many acre-sized parcels would you say there are?
How many one acre? I didn't.
Or even, so a half acre seems to be about the minimum footprint someone would need to fit.
And again, a lot of it's going to have to deal, do with context. Where's the building? Where is the street?
Yep.
How can you, can you get a driveway safely in?
We're talking about the Protection District too, so any of the more important houses, you can't even move them, you're stuck with the limitations of what's there.
My gut feeling, just from reading this, is that, you know, three, three developments like this would, would start to achieve some of the goals of the Village District bylaw. And I suspect there's probably three lots.
Yeah, and it's going to be more than that too. I mean, because, again, we're not talking about fundamentally transforming the center of town. I think we're providing opportunity for the people who live there to have a small business. I mean, again, we're not talking intense commercial district, it's opening up opportunities for people.
I think it's a little bit of fundamental change and it's a little bit of keeping the same because I think that the intent is to, like you said, have, allow people to start a business, but also to create a place where people might want to come and spend a little bit more time rather than just pay their tax bill and go home.
Yeah, and I think the greatest opportunity, again, relies in the land that we own as a town.
Yeah.
And we have a little bit more control over to begin with because it's probably going to be request for proposal. And that's where the really great things can happen. But as far as really, really changing the fabric of the town.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's not going to turn into downtown Boston or even. or even, you know, air. It's going to, it's, it's not going to be air ever.
So the, based on that discussion, we have enough space at the elementary school for existing space and the parking that we would need to do that, cover, assuming it was all retail.
Yeah, so I don't think I brought that plan with me tonight because I figured we'd have that conversation when we sat down with the school committee and the building we used and talked about that. I attended a school committee meeting and suggested that from the line that they proposed, we move it 150 feet back. Um, that sounds like a lot. When you see it on the map, it's not a lot, but it provides for site circulation behind the building and vehicle turnaround and more than enough parking spaces to fit that building out with whatever you want to use. And still leaves land for the school to put more parking for themselves up in land north of that, if they needed to. And just, well, you'll see it again when we have that discussion, but I, all the parking that I associate with that site, I didn't cut down any trees. It's all on the fields that are there. So.
The, the other thing I'd just note that, um, I believe that the Zoning Board of Appeals would be able to do is a variance for some of the properties, and a variance could reduce the amount of parking that we required as part of that. So going again, looking at what our consequences, we, I'm a regular patron of Asian Imperial and unless there's not parking there, you know, and so you, you end up coming, going to another restaurant if there's not enough space. So something that is what we want to come in there is going to create its own demand. And so I think you, you're addressing it and I think that the self-limiting part of the parking requirements will help part of the thing you're going to do. The issue that I have though is that once we do this, this doesn't mean the village can't expand because within their whole district, there's not enough space for, for existing parking and what do we need to do to that? So it may be a bigger discussion, I've raised it before, that we probably need a parking garage, a parking structure. Lemonster has a two-tier parking structure that doesn't, that's regularly metered, things like that. That changes the intent, but at the same time would provide some of that shared parking. And that goes beyond what your authority would be, but goes into the greater dialogue.
In a similar vein, I'm wondering, Damon, you've looked at, you're familiar with a parcel and is there any, given this, the school property there, is there, so we've talked about parking on that parcel servicing that Passios property, if that, and that's obviously the primary goal. Is there an opportunity to service the, uh, service any of the, like, service some of the other parts of the district? For example, the main street there, service it from the back with parking in a way that might offer a potential, not immediate unless it was taken advantage of by, you know, people developing those parcels, but to leverage parking on the parking or transportation access, you know, roadway on the Passios property to access the back of the, access properties that are currently on Main Street or, yeah, mainly Main Street from the backside of Passios.
Well, again, anything that happens at Passios is going to be request or proposal, so we can write it up however we want and suggest that the site contain parking for.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we could.
When you say access, you mean pedestrian access?
Well, yeah, I mean, in theory, I'm just looking here at this, this map, and again, this is, I'm just really brainstorming here. I don't want to take this too far, but something to think about is if, if we carved out of the, is there enough space in that Passios parcel to, if we were to hypothetically deed portions of the parcel that are on the Main Street side of the Passios lot, back to the town, out of the school, back to the town, and the town were to create town parking kind of on the backside of the Passios lot for shared use between Passios and whatever else.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that'd be a better conversation for the youth committee and the selectmen and the school board. And what, I can do graphics for that too, just to so, basically how much space that takes up.
It may even be better to, like Damon said, use it as part of the, the RFP and say, as part of this, you'll create X number of parking spaces to be dedicated as public municipal parking or something to that effect.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring it up. So I, that sounds great. Um, I think the first question is, do we want that? Do we, from a planning stand, and I'm not an architect, so you're in much better position to understand this than I do, but is there, uh, could we actually achieve a, a goal of providing parking to, to businesses that came in under this bylaw on this part of the district by opening up parking on that backside?
If we do that, then the town has to become a parking brokerage according to the, the bylaw because we require a documented legally binding agreement between the parking ownership and the shared parking usage.
Maybe we'd want to make an exception for the public parking there and just, it's a, it's a great point. Maybe we, that's something we need to tweak up a little bit.
I think that'd be akin to on-street parking.
Yeah, well, if it's, if it's municipal parking that's not dedicated to a use, it's, you know, you have to, as part of the development.
All I'm saying is that you wouldn't, you wouldn't gain the benefit of the parking when you're trying to apply for your usage and you don't have the appropriate parking. You can't say, well, right across the street, there's 12 lots. And I say, yeah, but that doesn't count because you don't have an agreement that says you can use any of those lots.
Did we say that? Or do you say you can use, count on-street parking?
It has to be, it has to be in writing.
Yeah, it's, uh.
Is that because we didn't think we had enough on-street parking?
It's B off-site parking.
Yeah.
B2.
I think part of it was the, the off-street, the, the on-street parking is currently used pretty extensively. And I think the idea was if we're going to, if the, there's going to be a dedicated reduction in your parking, you need to have agreement that you can provide it within so many feet. And that's why.
Because this little parking area up here would cover all the village districts for the most part.
Should we cross that bridge when we actually have some municipal parking?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's tough to say, it's tough to include municipal parking when we don't have any other than on the street and it, you know, there's what, a dozen, a dozen spaces out there that on any given day are, are full.
Yeah, so we should, I would say include it, you know, build it into the bylaws. We don't have to do as much work if we actually add the municipal parking. But I guess you're saying we could, because otherwise you gotta wait for a town meeting. But I guess that's fine. I mean, it takes a while to build municipal parking anyway, so.
Yeah, and you know, I mean, I think that if, if municipal parking was going forward, we'd have a little bit of advance notice and could sort of work up how we, we'd want to address it.
Yeah, good point.
And if there was, if all of a sudden there was a lot of municipal parking, then if you ask for a parking exception for your business.
Someone can say.
You'd probably be, oh yeah, well, when we constructed this, there wasn't municipal parking. Now that we've got 50 lots, so 50 spots, then we, we can waive that requirement.
Yeah, I guess we'll chalk that up under problems we'd like to have.
Yes, right.
I can input a little bit on the lot sizes. I, I also did a similar, um, study on the Village District area. There are 78 lots and less than half of those have a half acre. Of course, my computer won't wake up. So less than half of the lots.
Have over half an acre?
Have, have, 47 of them have five-plus acres. So it's just under half, just under half.
Have five-plus acres?
Half an acre, 0.5.
Okay.
And how many have more than 0.5?
There's 33 lots that have one-plus acre. 17 lots that have two or more acres. Um, and that also includes the three.
So 17 lots that could potentially have a significantly sized establishment with appropriate parking.
And also in, in the study that I did, uh, the parking for the residents was, um, very heavily weighted towards, um, well, it was, it was about half the requirement of retail, commercial, or any other restaurant use. So that, in my mind, is going to drive, um, development of large lots with one retail use and a whole bunch of mixed residential. Because of the requirements for parking were less than half as much. And with having one, one retail use, uh, that allows the rest of it to be residential and.
Yeah, but you're, you're still going to be limited on how many residential units you could put in and be cost-effective.
Size of a lot.
Yeah.
But.
And also we have our intent that we're relying on too, when we talk about that, making sure there's an appropriate mix, right?
Uh, no, I believe the.
Or is it just, we're fine with just one?
Well.
Well, it's, it's a mix, but we're saying that the ground floor is.
Yes, there's a limit on ground.
Commercial.
Only 25% can be residential on the ground floor.
So like you have a 6,000 square foot building with 5,000 retail with 1,000 living space and the second and third floor could be entirely rental units.
Correct.
Where's that 25%? Again, you're going to need, probably won't see a 6,000 square foot building doing that because you need the elevator.
You're going to need a lot less parking. Oh, you need an elevator for how many units?
Anything over three.
Three, yes. So if you have a fourth unit.
Even if they, they each have individual stairwells?
Unless.
Just going to make the buildings bigger.
And, no. Because of, um, Fair Housing Act.
What about if the, if there's a ground floor unit?
No, typically that applies to, there is an exception where up to a certain number of units, I think it's like 12, you don't need the elevator, but all ground floor units have to be fully wheelchair accessible. But because we're not allowing ground floor units or the appropriate mix of the intent of their law, they still would need to put an elevator in.
We are allowing ground floor.
When we say that.
Wasn't there no more than 25% shall be residential?
Yeah, but yes, the, the idea of the Fair Housing Act saying all ground floor units need to be accessible there, stating that with the fact that your building is copied down and there's an appropriate mix of accessible units to non-accessible units. You can't have just like two accessible units on the first floor and 10 walk-up units up above. It doesn't work that way.
Okay, so any, uh, I don't want to, if there's, um, in the interest of moving on to APD, is there any, any other public comment on the Village Center District tonight? We, we have a couple more meetings. Is, how many more meetings of public discussion do we have?
We have one more public discussion meeting next Monday, the 2nd of March. And then the public hearing is scheduled for the March 13th, or the March 9th meeting, rather.
So are we going to take the changes that we talked about tonight and incorporate those into a revised draft? Okay, great.
And that you included, you're going to take a crack at some of the things from the public feedback based on the discussion. Okay, that sounds great.
And, and I did have a conversation with the chair of the Historical Commission, and I see one of the members is here tonight. There was some concern about changing the character of the area from residential to commercial and you know, the depth of the district as it goes down, uh, Lemonster Road and what the long-term impact of that would be on the, the character of the historic district and the use of those homes as non-residential and historically it was a residential area. Uh, and, and that's the, the general outline of, of their concerns. Uh, I certainly don't want to speak any specifics because I know that they have their own mind on that. Uh, I do believe that they were invited for next week's meeting, um, to discuss the APD because they sort of put the draft together and I think it'll be a collaborative effort between the two, the two groups. So, you know, hopefully tonight, we can, we can go through that and you guys can sort of put your mind to it. And then, uh, when you come together, you can have a, a reasonable workshop discussion about, you know, where it might go and, and what might come of it.
That sounds great. Any other comments from the board on Village Center District before we move on to APD?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Matt's count of the two-plus acre lots, um, I don't want to sound like I downplayed the number, but it's part of the analysis because when you look at the shape of the lots, they may be two acres, but to get the parking in there and the parking circulation, the usable two-acre lots is not 17 usable two-acre lots.
And where they are in relation to the center is also different. I mean, some of them are actually adjacent to 2A and out towards the western edge of the district.
Yeah.
Which, not that it's not an important part of the district, but I think that that has, even within the district, there's areas that have different character.
I have one comment, if I may, before we wrap up. Just a few things I noticed offline, I was thinking, as I was thinking about the bylaw, do we need anything? Do we have anything in relation to, I know we have a general town noise bylaw. Do we need anything in relation to noise and hours of operation for the Village District bylaw? That was, that's kind of one thought. And the second thing was, I think our general bylaw, I forget the structure of our bylaws, but basically where it talks about all the districts at once, it talks about like minimum lot sizes by district, you know, for residents A and B.
Mm-hmm.
And if we add this district, what is the proposed minimum lot size? Do we have that in here?
There were none.
What's that?
None.
Okay, none. Is that clearly enumerated in here?
I thought it was.
Okay.
I thought it was too.
So I, you know, I might not, just, I might have missed it, you know, just, okay, oh, here we go. Uh, dimensional requirements. Minimum lot frontage, minimum lot area not applicable. So I don't know if we need to do anything. Is there already a clause that says what's in here overrides other places or whatever?
Well, this is the district.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think in this, where the.
You're talking about the dimensional.
Dimensional part, yeah, where it talks about, yeah. There's a section that sort of outlines that stuff for all the districts, like in one place, and it's, so I don't know if we need to harmonize that or what, but just throwing that out there to check out. If you can take a look at that. Do you guys have any thoughts about noise and hours of operation? Is that already, is that, assuming we have that specified in in the other districts, and I don't know if we've got it here yet.
Well, if it's a bar that goes to the selectman, right, for the license granting and do they do hours of operation?
I believe that they generally do. If you have a general noise bylaw, that would extend to all districts.
Okay. And is it the same requirements for? Yeah, okay.
You know, hours of operation, usually, I guess it depends, but those are limited based on use if necessary, but most of the time, retail use isn't going to be open terribly late.
Okay. Yeah, it's, I guess for the restaurants and stuff.
Given it's a mixed residential district.
Store 24.
What's there, no, I'm just kidding. So, I mean, given the mixed nature of the district, you know, residential, commercial.
Mm-hmm.
We might want, I, we might want to think about that so it doesn't become a problem where you got a restaurant.
Well, we must have something because the village right now, village development is full-blown commercial and they aren't open that late.
That's maybe lack of demand. I mean, that, that could be market forces taking, taking their toll, yeah. You know, I, I go home Lemonster Shirley Road every night and I haven't driven by that gas station when it hasn't been open.
Yeah, that's 24 hours, but the Dunkin' Donuts isn't. Figure that one out.
No midnight donuts?
If you're up at 3 o'clock in the morning, you don't need coffee.
Wow, guys, they could have been making a fortune during these storms.
They could have.
Uh, could you check that out for us, Adam?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks a lot. All right, so I, that's all I got. If, so if there's nothing else, I'll, I'd like to close our discussion for the night of Village Center District and move on to Architectural Preservation District. All right. So, so because it's getting late, I'm, I'd, I'd like to take the public comment, public thoughts on the Architectural Preservation District first again, even though we haven't had a chance to discuss it as a group yet. So any, any thoughts out there? Thank you, those who are hanging here with us. And just, just bear in mind, uh, we, I don't think we've had a discussion in a meeting yet between us on APD yet, but, um, so you're getting a first crack at it here.
Right. Um, so this is not on the website?
APD on the website, not on the website.
It didn't make it to the website, so.
All right, we'll get it up.
The general public hasn't seen it, but I was, didn't know if that's because you hadn't had a chance to look at it yet. Just some general things. I think it's a good start. Um, I'm concerned that it, it doesn't provide enough protection. And I know that this was taken from another, excuse me, communities. And, and we're trying to adapt it to what we're trying to do here. Um, just a quick comment, contributing, um, the definition of a building should be consistent with what we have in the zoning so that it looks like it's slightly different from the language you may already have. I know this is not a zoning thing, but we want to be consistent with what, make sure that you're covering the same thing. You, you talk about a contributing property, property constructed prior to 1900. It just sort of be interested to find out of the town center, how many fall within that? Just sort of be interested to find out of the town center, how many fall within that? As every year goes on, you, there may be some historically significant?
Yeah, I agree with you on that because, um, I think the state is 75 years, but just in our own center town, the Ritter Building and the primary school, both after 1900.
Right. And, uh, the, the mass, the mass law for some of the state and federal funding, it's 50 years, so it goes back to 1965, which I think would probably take every structure, including the schools, for the 50s. The, Section 7 has alterations for which advisory review is recommended. Anything that's optional, I, why are you doing it? Other than you should be giving technical assistance, but don't necessarily put it in the guidance. And then, um, there's different language using alteration versus addition. Just definition, make sure that everything's covered. And then, Adam and I had a little discussion about, um, the proposal talks about a, a committee being established and they'll come up with the, the design guidelines. And the selectmen will be appointing some of them. And as a selectman, that's great. But, once we appoint committees, we expect them to carry out their duties. But I don't know what they're gonna come up with. Is, are they gonna be really strict? Or are they gonna be very liberal? Either way, I'm concerned. So, not necessarily wanting to have you come up with what those guidelines are, but the concept of with a changing board, you wanna have the ability to have some consistency, the same time you wanna be able to change with the times to deal with the thing. So, that's not giving you an answer. I'm just concerned with not having the information there when you get to the review.
Great points. Any, any other thoughts from the, the audience or public? So, apologize, it wasn't on the website. Um, we'll get it up on the website. And, uh, of course, those here today can take home a copy as well. And again, we're gonna be discussing this again on March 2nd, so there's time to review it more and further formulate your thoughts. Feel free to, to come up to the mic if you get inspired anytime. In the meantime, I'm gonna turn it over to the Board here. Any Board thoughts on the APD? Damon?
Uh, Section 8, alterations which require APDC review. So it'd be bullet point C. New construction of buildings on properties within the APD, including additions, fully, including additions. But that almost sounds like a brand-new building. So I guess I want clarification. Is the, are they going to be reviewing new buildings as well or just additions? So a complete new build, some poor guy's gonna have to go through possibly zoning board of appeals, us and them? And hopefully all of us agree?
Why is that?
Well, they're, they're not looking at site concerns or use. They're only looking at the design of the building.
Yeah, but we have our own design...
But we have the design guidelines.
Guidelines.
Guidelines, right, yeah. So if...
I understand where they would review alterations to an existing building, but a brand-new one, I think that would be enough to subject them to just us.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with...
Is there a map for this district? Is this the same?
Same footprint.
Same footprint as the...
So it covers the same?
Uh, actually, my understanding is that they're going to look to have it be the entire historic district.
So it would be bigger.
So it would be beyond the extent of the Village District.
So the, so the district currently proposed to be entirely within the historic district?
Yes.
I had a question on it. We, we added a clause in there of demolition by neglect, but it's actually not covered and...
Yeah, did you remove that? It's a definition now. Before, I thought they had something in an earlier draft.
Well...
You know, so how do you regulate demolition by neglect?
That's a good question. This is the draft that was handed to me from, from the Historic Commission. And I did make some notes about things that I, you know, had discussions with the representative that I spoke to about and things that I was confused, concerned, had, you know, just general questions. Uh, I think demolition by neglect is something that, I mean, it exists. But the, proving intent is difficult and regulating it, I mean, I'm trying to think who I had that, was it you, Damon, that I had the discussion with about?
There's a difference between...
There's a difference between an 85-year-old person who just can't get up on the ladder and, and paint their house and can't take care of it, can't afford it, and, you know, the guy whose mom died and he's just letting it fall apart so he can sell it to somebody who wants to, you know, build a new commercial building. You can regulate it through criminal and non-criminal disposition and, you know, through taking them to housing court and enforcing your general bylaws that way. It's certainly not the speediest or most efficient way to do it, but it's the means by which you can do it.
Yeah. I'd like a little clarification of that 'cause I don't want it to sound like Historic Commission's gonna go knocking on your door saying, "Paint your house" or whatever.
Or re-roof it.
Or re-roof it or...
Well, re-roof, yeah, but I mean, that's, that's a huge issue, like with neglect.
But how do you go tell someone? You have to spend many thousands of dollars.
Well, here, here's what it says in 12, so they do reference, it's in definition, it is also in 12B. It says, "By exercise of this bylaw, the APDC assumes the authority of the Lunenburg Historical Commission pursuant to, relative to the proposed demolition, including demolition by neglect of buildings located within the APD." Now, there might be some grammar issues there, but, uh, it assumes the authority of the Historical Commission pursuant to, and then it has Chapter 16 crossed out.
Demo delay by law. For, for, within the APD, the APD Commission supersedes the Historic Commission for demo delay. Is, is my understanding of what the intent of that is.
Okay. And then it includes demolition by neglect, is what it says. So I guess I understand that...
Well, isn't there, there's a timeline on the demolition delay, right?
Six months.
Six months. So, I mean, is a house really gonna deteriorate to the point of being demolished in six months?
No, it's, that's different.
I guess I misunderstand that.
Demolition delay, um, works, uh, someone files for a demolition permit with the building department. They have to sign off for a number of things, is the water disconnected, power disconnected, whatever. And then one of the checkmarks is, did the Historic Commission approve the demolition of the building? So they do a review of it, um, see if it's over 75 years old, whatever, if it has historic meaning to the town. They decide whether it needs to go to a demolition delay hearing. They can immediately say it doesn't and they're fine. They can knock it down. If they decide it needs to go to a hearing, then it's a whole kind of public hearing, I think, to say that, no, you can't knock that down.
For six months.
And for six months, but during that six months, they're supposed to actively market the building to be moved or repurposed in a way other than just demolishing it. Um, once the six months is up, then yes, the, the applicant can still demolish the building.
Okay. So I'll restate my question another way. If, if you, if you're gonna be able to demolish it within six months, then where does demolition by neglect come into play?
I actually think that there's some, that there may be a lengthening of that six months or a proposal to lengthen that six months at the coming town meeting.
Oh, that's gonna be incorporated into this?
No, no, into, they're, they're, I believe they're looking to change the demo delay by law to add some, to change it from six months to a long-term.
Because I was gonna say, if you can, if you can demolish it within six months, the whole purpose of demolition by neglect doesn't really come into play 'cause a house can't degrade itself into a condemnable property in six months' time.
And I think that the intent is more to have some control over demolition by neglect. And maybe Mr. Dwyer can shed some light on it.
I, I hope I can clear up some of this. Um, my name is Colin Dwyer. I'm of the Historical Commission. And first of all, I'd like to, uh, thank everybody for the comments that they've made. I think they're all very valid and they're all concerns that we have as well. As, as Mr. Bernie said, that this was a bylaw, that the APD was a bylaw, borrowed from another municipality and we're trying to repurpose it for something else. And we're trying to include other things in it that we think we're missing from it. It is just a draft. It is, it's a work in progress. You need to look at it like that. To address your question specifically, demolition by neglect would be a different thing than the demolition delay by law, which is really the only enforcement organ that our commission has at the moment. And we feel like it, it really doesn't have any teeth. Uh, we can only delay demolition for six months. And Lunenburg really doesn't have any historic protection. So I think really what we'd like to do is, uh, to, to protect, to, to offer some sort of historical protection for the historic downtown area. And at the same time, we're also trying to, uh, put limits on what, how the character of the town will be changed by this, uh, this new Village District bylaw. To be quite honest, the mood of the Historic Commission is apprehensive about the, the district bylaw. We're particularly concerned about the fact that the map includes residential areas, areas that we consider are very pleasant and historic, not necessarily historical, but that have many historical buildings on them and are essentially residential in character, particularly, uh, Lemonster, Lancaster Avenue and Main Street. So I think the wording of the APD at the moment is quite strict and a little bit aggressive and really honestly confrontational. It's going at odds with the Village District bylaw because we want to restrain it and we feel like that's, uh, our purpose. Like we're, we're supposed to be the ones that are putting the brakes on this and preventing downtown Lunenburg from changing drastically. But I think there was an agreement at our last meeting that we're looking forward to this meeting and that hopefully that we, there could be a little negotiation and that we could soften some of our language and, and make it more agreeable. I agree that, uh, you know, to, right now, uh, we have the wording such that not the Historic Commission, but the, uh, the review board, yet another commission that would be elected by the, the Board of Selectmen, would review all, uh, changes, any renovations, anything that would change the look of a building, including demolition and including new construction. So right now, we have ordered it to include everything. Though really, maybe that's not appropriate. Maybe new construction in a commercial area would not be needed, needed to pass the same kind of review as, uh, say, the laws that would apply to a historic building that we wanted to preserve. They're really two different cases. And we're hoping that we can redraft this or change it and bring it around so that it will, it will, uh, address these issues better.
Okay. And, uh, I guess, are we supposed to meet with them next meeting? The full Historic Commission? Is that the plan?
I believe that was, I, I believe that Becky said she was available that night and I think she's also available on the 9th, so...
Okay. Well, in this, anyways, we're gonna talk to them together, right?
Yes, yeah.
So that's part of the reason why my little study looked like the Brooks House is to kind of open the conversation of what if someone did take the Brooks House per se and try to alter it to make it a viable project? So we can use that as kind of a talking point when we have that conversation of what substantial change is, what's allowable, and, um, what's a good project. But I look forward to that conversation with everybody.
If there's any other particular questions?
Yeah, so about the, the demolition, my understanding, it was a couple weeks ago I read this. I, I do have some other comments I wanna discuss, but regarding demolition, so that, that falls under Section 7, alterations for which, or sorry, Section 8, alterations which require APDC review. According to this, if the APDC, let's say someone proposes a demolition of a historic building, they bring it in front of the APDC for review, they rule negatively. So they can't demolish, was my understa, how, what's, how does that work exactly? So they, my hope is that they can't demolish at that point, but how does, how does that?
No, they can delay it, right?
That's, that's, that would be correct, that the, uh, the APDC could deny you permission to demolish, demolish the building.
And then you wouldn't be able to get the demolition permit?
Uh, no, no. Um, and I think the, I, I think you bring up very good questions about how would we enforce this, especially demolition by neglect, which is very difficult to demonstrate that even anybody is neglecting a property. And how would you require somebody to spend a lot of money to upkeep a building, especially if it was just a burden to them?
So putting aside demolition by neglect, let's say just take straight-up demolition. What's the mecha, so, okay, I say I wanna demolish my 1750 house. I come to you, you say, "No, denied, you're not gonna demolish it." "I'm done, can't demolish it."
Correct.
Okay, great.
Only your barn's 1750.
My barn's 1790. I, I don't wanna demolish it either. I'm just trying to understand. So, uh, I think the mother nature wants to demolish it, but I don't wanna demolish. So back to, okay, so, sorry, we can talk about demolition neglect later. So there is a mecha, so that is, that's a pretty, that's a nice protection. That's good.
Where, if you look at the... Section 10, procedures for issuance and filing determina, oh, no. There's a section in here that talks about the review and it says the decision of the APD is final. The APDC is final and...
Do we need to integrate this with like the building zoning officer or anything to make it clear that people can't circumvent?
Yeah, can we, Mr. Savageo's opinion on this one?
Yeah, we, I don't, maybe some legal input as well. I'm not sure that you, we have enough, that you can create, because something with this kind of restriction.
Just for some backstory, I served on the Historic Commission for three years and there's even a question when I started, "Oh, we should do, we should do something about demolition by neglect, but how do you do that?" And we have never, in like the four years since I had started on the Historic Commission, had any answer as to...
So are we talking about demolition by neglect or?
No, if we take the demolition by neglect out and we just look at the, the other aspects of it.
So do you have an issue with, forget, I mean, we can talk about demolition neglect, but straight-up demolition prohibition, I think that's great. I think that's just what we need to go forward with VCD. Are, are you cool with that? Do you see issues with that?
Can they reapply?
Can they what?
Can someone reapply? Is it just final, final, final?
Uh, does it have, I forget if it has, you know, reapplication period or what?
APD's written determination.
I mean, some of this has to be backed up by mass law, right? We're not just writing this out of the sky.
No, this is not out of the sky. And it, it was passed and accepted by Ipswich. And if I'm not mistaken, has passed the Attorney General's view.
Just, just generally, any historic bylaw used to live in a historic district in Cape Cod, the Old King's Highway, and they could outright prohibit, and that's allowed by state law.
Yeah.
So it, you have to do something with it. Now, damage by fire, you know, snow load, takes down the barn, whatever, you're allowed to demolish it at that point, but...
Yeah, where it becomes a safety concern.
It becomes, the, the town has the regulatory authority to absolutely prohibit it.
Section 11C, um, "The APDC shall make every effort to coordinate a review with that of other town boards." Section 13, appeals procedure, any perceived, any person aggrieved by the termination of the APD may appeal to Superior Court. So they make the decision and it's final. And if the appeal is, is the same as it would be for a DPR or for a subdivision where, or a special permit, you, you know, you're going to court through, to, to appeal that decision.
But you can still appeal it, right?
Yeah, you can appeal it. It just, you can't be, they can't be overruled by Mr. Savageo or someone can't say, "Well, thanks, but I'm just gonna go do it anyway."
What happens if they do?
Well, that's the same, the same thing as if, you know, if someone was granted a special permit or not, denied a special permit and they went and started building the gas station or, you know, operating their business that required the special permit. They could be, you know, they'd be shut down, the town would take enforcement action against them and all that fun stuff.
Do we need to specify the enforcement actions? You know, 'cause that's the thing.
Yeah, and, you know, again, this is just transcribed language, but it would be the same as anything else, criminal and non-criminal disposition through, you know...
Is that, so it would be specific criminal disposition? Like what's the...
Non-criminal disposition is you're ordered to do things if you don't, you know, if you don't do them, there's a series of fines. If you ignore those orders, don't pay those fines, then you can take them to Superior Court and it can be considered criminal action.
So what kind of... So what kind of, I mean, so to offset the, so if someone really wants to demolish a structure and it's worth, you know, $200,000 for them to clear that structure, I mean, we're gonna slap them on the, are we gonna slap them on the wrist with a $500 fine or is there, yeah, so I think we need to maybe work on some specific penalties.
There's fine limits within mass general law.
Okay.
So I mean, we can, we can certainly do some more research on that, that section of it. I don't, I don't know if the Historic Commission has done any more from that end, but-
Yeah, my concern is we've had situations in town where developers have flaunted our laws, specifically because the penalties are-
Minor.
Very minor. This is a case where we're really counting on this APD to backstop the whole village district bylaw. And if it's not a strong backstop, well, you know, we're gonna be, they're gonna hang us in the village square.
It's also a double-edged sword, too. Right? If it has so much teeth and it's so restrictive, no one will want to build anything in the village district.
Well, it doesn't, I don't want it to affect new construction. I'm just talking about preserving the historic homes and yes, there I want it to have a lot of teeth.
As it's written, it's intended to have some significant teeth.
Well, teeth? What's the teeth?
It also applies to new construction right now.
Well, that's, I don't know if that's teeth, that's breadth. I guess it's got a lot of gums.
I'm just saying-
It's annoying, it tickles people, you know?
Make it very restrictive, I just, it's a double-edged sword is all I'm saying. You want to preserve the historical nature, but you don't want to make it so prohibitive to do anything in the village district that you just don't bother. Because then, because then all it will have is a historic district. We won't actually have a village district.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think-
Yeah, I think there's a difference between demolition and modifications, alterations should very seriously be considered positive alterations, where I can see where things may be said, don't demolish it, but if we keep getting decision after decision with no demolish, no alteration, then it defeats the purpose.
Yeah, and my impression is this does a nice job of walking that line by saying it's a recommended review for alterations. It's not a, it's not a mandatory review. I mean, I think Section 7 is alterations for which advisory review is recommended, meaning you don't, it's, you don't even have to do it. But then you get into alterations which require it and you got demolition. I think new construction should come out of there, but I think it's, it's got a framework which starts to, I think, walk that line you're talking about in a good way.
I think that recommended thing has to come out of that. This is a regulation, it's telling people what they have to do and then it mentions, oh, in this, you should do this too.
So you're saying it would be good if B and C weren't in it, which were the sections that were added?
What, B and C where?
Eight B and C.
I think we could have a discussion about B. I'm not, you know, I think, I can understand why it's there. I mean, I don't think they can be total Nazis about it, but I understand why it's there.
B should go into the recommended that they're consulted, but we still have design, we still have the design bylaw. They should be making recommendations, but we have-
Yeah, so this is an alteration, right? Would an alteration, I'm not changing my use, I'm changing the exterior of my house, would that come?
I'm just saying, if you wanna, let's say you build something in the village district and then you want to come back and enhance it.
Yep.
Now you're gonna have to go before this board for approval on that.
Well, I think they're saying that just to make sure that the alteration is within their guidelines. And I don't, you know, I don't, I have to reread it, it's been a couple of weeks, like I said, but I don't think, what they're reviewing for doesn't have to be strict, but I can understand why they're requiring a review of an exterior alteration. Not because they're gonna come in and say no to everything, but just because it's an exterior alteration, they can't, they're not gonna empower you to say, no, I don't need it reviewed. It's, I mean, you can correct me if-
If I can clear it up, right now, the way it's written, or at least the way we understand it's written, is that it casts a very broad net. Any alteration, anything that changes the look of the building would be an alteration and it would have to pass the Historical Commission Review Board, so.
And that's what I'm saying, is that's so restrictive that no one would want to build anything in the village district.
That's right.
So that's what I'm saying, it's a double-edged sword. We have to draw that line, someplace between preserving the historic nature and actually promoting the growth of the village district. Because if we make it so exclusive that, that no one will want to do anything in the village district.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it depends, yeah, it depends, I think, on how strict the review is, I guess. And I agree that C should come out of there. I think the new construction piece should come out. But, but look, I mean, even in our design standards, we do have, we do subject some criteria for new construction, and that's why I think new construction should come out of here.
I think to Mr. Ebersol's point back at the beginning is, there's a set of regulations and procedures that it's incumbent on the Architectural Preservation District Commission to adopt and promulgate. And it's indeterminate who those five people are and which direction they're going to take that set of regulations, and that's gonna have a massive impact on whether or not they're taking the big Monty Python foot and quashing everybody who wants to come in, or just saying, well, you painted a historic color, that's close enough.
Will the Board of Selectmen have to at least review the standards that they come up with initially?
No, it's adopted by public hearing.
Yeah. It'll be voted on.
So the-
So they'll be elected, they'll assemble their decisions and then at a separate town meeting, they'll-
It's not a town meeting, it's just, it's a, it's a public hearing of the Architectural Preservation District Commission. So it's the same as when this board wants to alter their rules and regulations.
So it's a board with no oversight?
Well, I guess theoretically, the oversight would be if the selectmen are unhappy with the direction that they take the board, they don't reappoint the members who made the decisions that-
That's always difficult.
Created the rules that they disagree with.
I mean, it's not like us, the people can just vote us out.
So could we, the other question, could we just peg it to our design standards? So say they're gonna evaluate based on the same design standards.
Right. If we could couple them, that would be a great thing.
But I think that you-
Even better, if you built the design standards into the Historical Preservation Act, then the village district could just refer to the historical preservation as the design standard guidelines. And then add on whatever specific layers we're trying to promote that don't conflict with it.
Yes, you could do that.
Then, then it wouldn't be whatever someone feels like. You'd actually have something as a guideline.
I don't think that they could tie back to the village district, but I think vice versa could be true.
That's what I'm saying. Right, so the village, so if they had, if we took, if we took the design guidelines out of the village district bylaw and we embedded them into this instead, and then in the village district bylaw, we just refer to this historic district's design guidelines, then that ties the two together with, we, then we can hash it out-
Yes.
As opposed to subjecting a builder to what they can and can't do at the whim of a board.
And I think, well, what I'll say is I think that-
Committee.
There's, I think the reason that they allow for, when it was originally done, the community allowed the commission to develop their own regulations and adopt them by public hearing of that commission, is it allows you to be a little bit more nimble and not have to jump through the town meeting. You know, let's say you come up with some great, you think they're the best design standards ever, and everyone in town meeting is like, yeah, these are awesome. And you go through a couple of reviews and you're like, wow, we're missing, you know, a quarter of what we really need, or, you know, this is so cumbersome that we can't even wrap our heads around it. You've gotta wait that whole cycle for town meeting to come back again. Whereas if it was just a, it's just a public hearing of the commission, you go through the normal seven and 14 advertising and you can sort of tweak it as, as you go along.
Well, you can always override by the commission for tweaks.
Yes. So again, I'm not saying that-
Throw in the "or approved by" the commission, right? And that, that allows you, a vehicle to override the design guidelines as well.
Maybe, maybe I'm going the other direction with this, but I just want to, I want to limit the redundancy of the same people or different people reviewing the same thing. So my suggestion would be, under Section 8, we remove C like we talked about. So this is alterations which require review. B, exterior alteration to a contributing property, could we say, unless the project undergoes site plan review by us, because we're gonna be already reviewing the design standard?
Yeah, I think that this is all part of the discussion that needs to be had with the Historic Commission, because we can come up with things that we all think are great ideas and they could be opposed to, you know, relinquishing that control. I think Ken's on to something with everybody using the same guidelines. And I think that that, I mean, it doesn't eliminate the double issue that you have with the new construction, but it at least puts everybody on the same page. And so there's one set of regulations that this board would look at and that would also be used in the APD.
I just know, design standards, and they end up being 60 pages long.
I know.
Well, we got design standards, we developed them for-
No, I mean historic, it's a different level.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and I think that that's the other thing that-
That's not the intent for this thing, though.
I think it is.
No, no, we specifically went-
Well, I think it is the intent of the Historic Commission to have that control.
Well, okay, but I think when we went with APD, we specifically, and I even, what, who's the, I don't know, former or current chairman of the historic district, Bob and I were in the, in the meeting with Rebecca or said, you know, really, I think everybody, everybody I've talked to is pretty much on the same page. Their main concern is don't demolish the structure. Put up your vinyl siding, paint it whatever you want, but don't demolish the structure. That's kind of their main thrusts of what, what, what people are concerned about regarding these historic structures.
That's what I'm concerned about.
I think your concerns, everybody, from Rebecca to me, I think, not, Bob's got a little broader brush, so I don't, won't paint him with that. But that's, I think, the main thing we're going after here. I'm not saying we don't want no design standards. It'd be nice to get the same design standards we have in the other bylaw, but the goal here wasn't to do what Bob talks about, well, at least for me, and I don't think for Rebecca and probably not for you. When Bob talks about some of the really rigid stuff he had down on Kings Highway, you know, don't plant these flowers, don't use that material in your deck, kind of stuff, my understanding was that was not the intent with the APD.
That's my understanding as well, but-
My understanding is the intent is to limit the development in the center of town.
No.
Well, I mean, I think that there's a variety of different, there's a variety of different things. I think that the site issues and, you know, color are one thing, and the ability to alter the structure in whatever manner sort of operates in a different realm. And I think that that's somewhat part of the intent of the APD is maybe not prohibiting the alteration of the structure, but limiting the manner in which it's altered to eliminate changing its character. And I think that it's very easy to come at that intent from a variety of different places that maybe don't all meet harmoniously at the end. So I think that it's, I think we're at a point where this board is kind of in agreement with what their expectations are from the APD. And you all have some questions that I think are best suited to have in discussion with the Historic Commission. I think, right now, we're chasing our own tails because we're, we're trying to guess where they're coming from and where they're going, meanwhile, having our own intent that I think, you know, the four members here have kind of lined up.
Well, not directly guessing, I mean, we do have a representative, yeah.
I feel better having a whole board.
He's represented them well. I think that the chair at least, and I think other members have their own minds on, on issues that, you know.
I can confirm that, yes.
And, you know, I think that there's probably a little bit of disagreement amongst the commission on some of the finer points.
Yes.
And I think, hopefully, we can get a, a full or a majority representation to kind of have the discussion and maybe hash out some of those finer points that you guys have and, and let the planning board sort of get their, their input.
I'm hoping for the same thing, too. And I think that we don't see eye to eye at the moment. I agree with Mr. Lockwood that, yes, I think the one thing that everybody agrees on is that they don't want to see historic houses being torn down. And I think there's a lot of common agreement about the intent to preserve the charming New England character of downtown Lunenburg. I think everybody wants that. So I think it is possible to find some common ground. It'll take a little bit of patience. You have to understand that there's a measure of naivete on the part of the Historic Commission. We've never drafted a bylaw before. So we don't even know what's legal or, you know, exactly what's gonna fly.
I can feel for that.
Yeah.
I've experienced that myself.
Okay, any other comments from the board or from Martin as well on the APD or anyone else?
Paula Bertram, 312 Townsend Harbor Road. A couple of comments on the APD. You know, I do think that we need to make sure that the design standards are one and the same. Because if you look at the purpose of the Village Center District bylaw, it's to encourage adaptive reuse of abandoned vacant or underutilized buildings and allow for mixed land uses. So not to me is economic development. If that's the objective, then in all of the economic development seminars that I've gone to, and Nathan, I know you have as well, one of the important components of that is a streamlined permitting process. And so having to go for a special permit, having to go to the APD, having to go to the planning board, you're not gonna foster economic development. So I think it's critical that we all are on the same page. I also think it's critical that we preserve our town center and the historic nature. But in looking at the preliminary design standards in the APD, when you talk about, you talk specifically about the spacing of windows and the character of the building, which is in direct contradiction to the glazing that's required by the planning board, which frankly, I think is way too much. If you go to Concord or if you go to Groton, there's nowhere near that requirement, which are, which are centers that I happen to think are perfect for New England character. Couple other things in the APD is, Section 8 talks about it being binding on the applicant. Is it binding on the applicant or binding on the property? So that's one of the questions that I have. And if it's binding on the property, when you look at section, the section regarding, the Section 10, Procedures for Issuance and Filing, if it's binding on the property, similar to a zoning board decision or a Conservation Commission decision, there should be a requirement to record it. So that if and when the property changes hands, it's found. But I also am concerned about that because it isn't, is it in perpetuity? Is it on the property? Is it the set of circumstances? You know, so I think that that has to be flushed out, is, is what, what is, is it truly a final decision that is associated with the property versus the applicant?
I feel like Dave Rogers. Bobby Brussel again. So one final comment is my concern of demolition by renovation. So if you don't have design guidelines on renovation on the exterior, you will effectively demolish the building. You start stripping off all the siding, you take out all the windows, you upgrade and you change the whole style. You've changed that style from a colonial to modern or whatever. And either we want to allow it or we don't, but if we're trying to protect the historic district in a way, you're gonna have to come up with something to do that. I'll echo Mrs. Bertram's comments about the streamlined permitting, one hearing where all the boards come together with the same standards. You know, the Cape Cod Commission was good, even though our house was built in 1978, I knew that my neighbors were not going to build something that was not consistent with the historic district of the building. So massing, all the various things like that, the design guidelines in your, the Village Center District right now are limited. And I don't know if there are some other guidelines somewhere else in your zoning that are already there, you know, a little bit, I know it when I'll see it. The meeting that you have with the Historic District, if you come up with a standard by which we're going to do something, you really need to have a review to make sure that something doesn't be taken down in another way. you really need to have a review to make sure that something doesn't be taken down in another way.
All right, good comments. Any other board thoughts on this tonight?
I look forward to meeting with the Historic Commission, figuring this out.
All right, I got a few quick comments. I think some of them already went up. Same as Bob, the date, you know, it's 1900. Bob mentioned 50 years as a state. I don't know if, you know, I'm not sure, I don't, I don't know if 1965 is the right number. That seems a little too recent. Maybe 50 years is the right number to use. Yeah, maybe 1940, I don't know. But I, in my head, I feel like 1940, but I'm happy to use something, whatever. But I think 1900 is probably too, it needs to be early. I think there's, I don't think 1900 is covering enough.
You don't think it's covering enough, or you think it's covering too much?
Not enough, like, so meaning it's got to cover more buildings from 1920, 30. To me.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Everything should be covered.
I see.
But, you know, I'm open to, you know, post-World War II stuff as well, but that's. There was something here I didn't quite understand, I guess. Contributing, or contributing property definition. I wasn't totally clear to me. Which contributes to its historical character or houses within the APD, which was either vacant prior to the adoption of this bylaw or subsequently becomes vacant due to the demolition of its principal building. I didn't totally follow what that all meant. So maybe, I don't know, maybe that just needs to be cleared up. Maybe it makes sense that I just need to be educated. Demolition by neglect. I know, I don't want to get into this right now because it's a big one. Personally, I think, I understand you sort of need to do that with a soft hand, but I'd like, if it could be addressed in some way with phases and periods and a series of warnings or something, just to sort of start the dialogue between property owners, just to communicate that, hey, to property owners, the town cares about this building. This has an impact on town as a whole and the goals of the town, you know. You know, maybe there's precedents that deal with that in a humane and effective way. Section 5. Yes, this was just the thing about the, I was kind of on the same page about, I didn't like that X factor, the APDC adopting the guidelines. I'd rather have those kind of, so that's same, we've already talked about that, skip. Whoops, all right. Under the structure definition, structures not defined as buildings or parts, oh. Yeah. Exemptions, the following are exempt from requirements as bylaw. Structures not defined as buildings or parts of buildings. So is a barn, what?
Oh, barn's totally a building.
It's a.
It'd be a wall.
Okay, okay.
You know, yeah, if you have a, if you have a stone wall over four feet, that's considered a structure.
Okay, okay.
Stuff like that.
Okay.
Things that aren't actually a building.
So there's not going to be an interpretation issue around that one? Okay, good. So this, then.
I'm not gonna say that, but.
Okay. And then another question around demolition or neglect. What is the trigger event for demolition of neglect? So this gets into why I think we need to spend, I do think it's worth spending time on demolition neglect. Not tonight, but, you know, other demolitions as a trigger event. I come to you and say, I'm going to demolish my building, I'm going to change it. Demolition and neglect, there's no, you know, it's got to be proactive on the part of the town or something, or by complaint or something to trigger that process? Yeah, I think we, you know, my comment as I read this was, I think we need more clarification around what constitutes an exterior alteration and whatnot. That's similar to the conversation we've been having. Sorry, I just want to get through these. Down here, it says, if APDC determines by majority vote that the alteration adheres to the standard, blah, blah, blah. Question, it says by majority vote. Is this defined somewhere, is that majority of the APDC or majority of quorum or what's the?
If I'm not mistaken, the Town Charter defines majority by majority of the seated members.
Gotcha, okay, good, excellent.
It's majority of the authorized members, not the ones that are in office. So you have a.
Of the authorized members? Of the, the full membership?
Right, right.
Yes. That, sorry.
There was a misunderstanding before that if only four, three of you were elected, the quorum is still three, it's not two.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
So it's a, it's a majority of the full complement of the board.
Okay.
So the Planning Board, the majority is always going to be three.
Okay.
Unless it's a supermajority, which is four.
Very good, okay. Yeah, so design standards, making them consistent, that's something we already talked about. And enforcement, yeah, the teeth, we talked about that. Good, okay. Yeah, I think that's going to be very important. I mean, because like I said, this is critical, given what we're doing with Village District. It says, okay, coordination with other town boards and bylaws. Acceptance to be, blah, 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 shall not supersede with or interfere with the regulatory authority of other local or state boards or APDCs. Do we need to state explicitly that there's no relief from the APDC's determination from the ZBA? So I get the appeal to the higher court thing, that makes total sense. Do we need to make it clear that they can't appeal the APD's decision?
They can't, because it's not a zoning bylaw.
Oh, okay.
General bylaw, so.
Okay.
The zoning board has no jurisdiction over general bylaw.
All right, those were my questions. Yeah, that's awesome. All right, great, thank you. Okay, so anyone else, last, last thing for, last chance for tonight to talk about APD. All right, move on. Thanks, everybody, for contributing that. That was an excellent discussion, in my opinion. All right, minutes approval. I guess we have minutes of January 12, 2015, previously disseminated to the board.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes from January 12, 2015.
Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, and then we have the executive minutes of February 4, which I guess we haven't seen yet. So I will pass these around.
Super long, I don't know if you can read them right now.
Review. Don't say anything, review them silently and. This is before you can.
So you can't do it tonight anymore?
The pre-Cheney's era.
You can't do it tonight, then?
I can't do it tonight?
Well, Damon wasn't there and Ken wasn't a member of the board, you don't have.
Okay, all right.
Send them on back. Send them on back, send them on back.
All right, thwarted by the rules. All right, committee reports. MRPC, Joanna, we'll talk about it next time she's here. Capital Planning Committee, Joanna not here. School Building Committee, School Building Committee met last week. We got a tour of the construction in progress. It's impressive to see the work they've done. They've been set back a bit by the storms, but.
Really?
They've pushed, I believe they've, yeah, they've, but, you know, they're plowing through it, no pun intended. They've, you know, had the snow blowers out on the roof and doing everything they can.
There goes a contingency.
Yeah, I don't know about all of it, but, yeah, they're trying to restructure the schedule in order to try to make up time where they can. But overall, I'd say things are going well. They're continuing, I think they're going to start pouring the foundation for, you know, another piece of the building, do more steel. I don't know, I don't, can't give you all the details, but looking pretty good over there. Open Space Ad Hoc, I have not met with them. Building Reuse Committee?
Have not met, have to schedule a new, next meeting time.
MJTC?
MJTC did meet, and I do have an update, but unfortunately, it wasn't in my package here. I don't have it tonight, so can I defer my update to the next meeting?
Sure. AdCom?
AdCom has met, has had two meetings since the last we met. And their last one, most recent, was canceled due to lack of quorum. On 15th of January, they did meet. On that date, their chair was talking about a meeting with him and the Select Board on the 6th. He felt was very positive, was a meeting about the farmer's market, about the AdCom gaining control or oversight. Again, very positive. Everything's positive, looked good.
Great.
Great.
Okay, new business development status reports. There's, the only things we have report on is town meeting May 2nd, the warrant closes March 23rd. Do you have anything you'd add to that, Adam?
No, I mean, we're having the hearing in two weeks on the town meeting zoning items, most of which is the APD. I think there's some renumbering of the medical marijuana bylaw and a couple of other minor items that are really just housekeeping associated with the village.
Scenic.
Scenic roads, that they don't require hearing, but they'll be on town meeting.
Awesome. Are they, are we going to have a little public discussion on those? Okay, so they'll get in the agenda, awesome. Anything else on warrant?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay. All right, the other topic that we had something on was Highfield Village, but we've, I think, already talked about that, so I think we're in good shape. Moving on to action file, verbal update from Adam on the housing production plan.
Been submitted to the state. I have confirmation from them, they have it, they have a review period and hopefully they'll accept it as written.
Great. Any questions on that? Okay, scenic road, we talked about, okay, nothing else there for, with a report on it. Notices and communications. Anything I should cover there today, Marjorie?
Oh, yes, there is a proposed project on Summer Street for expansion of an existing automotive garage with the addition of a residence above in the Summer Street overlay district. They're in front of the zoning board for a special permit, which will kick them down the line to this board for development plan review if they are granted the special permit.
I reviewed the material set. I was wondering, what was the dimensional standard they were seeking relief from?
Side yard setback. I think they're looking to encroach up to five feet on the side yard. The plans they submitted were probably lacking the level of detail that would have made that evident.
Okay. Awesome, thank you for the update on that. All right, meeting schedule, I won't go through that. We have media, sorry, I will go through that. So all the meetings are held here in Town Hall at 6:30 unless otherwise indicated. March 2nd, we have a public discussion of VCD and APD draft bylaws, picking up where we left off today, coming back and reviewing the updates that Adam incorporates based on the conversation today. Adam, would it be possible to, even though those aren't going to be fully vetted, why don't you go ahead and post those to the website?
Oh, yeah, certainly.
That'd be awesome.
Once they're completed, I'll send them around and we'll get Marjorie to post them.
Oh, that'd be great, thank, that'll be awesome. And so look for those on the website between now and March 2nd, if you're looking to, you know, read them up before you come to the meeting. March 9th, we have a hearing for Planning Board warrant articles followed by a regular meeting. Then we have meetings on March 23rd, April 13th, and April 27th. Then May 2nd is town meeting. Any public comment? Okay, no public comment. Any board comment?
Yeah, I'm not sure it's a board comment or member issues, but I've been pushing and mentioning and asking, suggesting this board, especially now that we've realized that supermajority requires four people to actually pass a special permit. I think we should either increase the number from five to seven, or we should add two alternates, or we should do both. Because these meetings go on for a long time. That's not, well, division, division and a larger non-quorum of people that can actually communicate outside of meetings. We can actually get some things done in between meetings. Then we wouldn't have to keep delaying people. You get, you get public people come for a meeting and the proponent calls you the day before and says, no, can't make it. And you've got to reappetize meeting and that doesn't really have much to do with it either. But still, I think that we should have our bases covered. We've only got four people in membership tonight, and I think the last meeting was only four. Quite often, there's only four. Sometimes only three, but.
So question, so supermajority, so if, so your goal's to increase the number there. That would be a town charter change, I guess, or what? Your goal there, if you increase the number, does the supermajority number change? So like if you.
So for a five-member board, supermajority is four. For a seven-member board, a supermajority is five.
What about six members, still four?
You don't want an even number.
Number, got it, okay, bad luck, okay.
Well, and then your normal majority is four, but you can constantly have split vote.
Yep, gotcha, okay. And next, so that's one of your goals is.
Well, there was, there was an either and, an or. So, I mean, I would like to increase from five to seven. I would like to have alternates. I would like ideally to have both of those, but if I can only get anybody to be interested in.
Can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I would like to increase the number of planning board members from five to seven. And I also think that it would be a good idea to have alternates. And in a perfect world, I think we would, I would like to increase and get alternates on the town, on the warrant for a charter revision for this coming town meeting.
I don't think it'll happen for this town meeting.
No?
To put together the charter language, I'd have to look at it. I, I'm not sure what a charter review would take, but I believe you have to seat a charter review committee. And you could put the, you could make the proposal for a charter review committee to be seated.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought it was our, I thought it was up to us and we had to have it approved at the meeting.
No, I believe it's an actual, it's a alteration to the town's charter.
Okay.
Because, and again, I'd have to look at the town's charter, but I'm pretty sure that's what outlines the membership numbers for the board. So you're then altering the charter, which goes through that whole, I believe you guys did that recently here in town, within the last decade or so.
The charter was reviewed, revised for the town manager, I believe.
Yeah, so within the last 10 years, and it's a, it's not a small undertaking.
Okay, well, maybe next fall, then we can look at that.
And so just to understand the intent, though, the other piece I thought I heard you say was something about meeting outside of meetings. Is there something you believe that having the larger group and larger quorums can allow you to avoid open meeting considerations?
I think that we could get more done if we could work in groups.
You can still work in groups.
I know we can, one, one or two-person member groups, right? I think it would be better if we could do it in three, but two is good.
So you're saying with regards to open meeting, if we have a team of seven, then three people can meet, whereas if we have a.
It becomes such a, you could form a subcommittee and you'd still have to post open meeting law for the subcommittee because their meeting and that membership is making decisions for the subcommittee, but you're not also having to post a, if you had a subcommittee of three for the Planning Board, it would essentially constitute a Planning Board meeting. Because you'd have a majority of the Planning Board there. Whereas if you had a seven-member board, you could have a subcommittee of three. That would just be a subcommittee meeting and it wouldn't constitute an actual Planning Board meeting.
Okay, okay, no, it's good to understand the goals there. So right now, if you wanted to do something like that, you'd have to have one Planning Board member.
One or two.
One or two, and then non-Planning Board members if you want.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thanks for bringing that up, Matt. Anyone else have any board comment? Yeah, so. All right, member issues.
I got it off my chest.
Not good for tonight.
Okay, I have a member issue just in regard to the upcoming election. My term expires in May. I'm planning to not run again, just for a variety of, I really love the Planning Board, love being on it. I got a bunch of, you know, personal life-type issues that I'm going to have to take a little break for a while, so.
I understand your feelings.
So, yeah, so, I mean, I think the board's got great momentum. I think we're doing great things. I'm not leaving until my term's over, so I hope to, you know, you know, hopefully we see this stuff through, this Village District and APD. But I, the only reason I'm making the announcement is so that members of the public, you know, I think the Citizens Party Caucus is in March and, you know, it's important, it's an important board and it's important to get, you know, energetic people who care a lot about the town and have, you know, ready to think hard about these issues involved. ready to think hard about these issues involved. And so, yeah, I mean, even if I was running, you should still, still come and run, but it's, you know, I'm not running, and so just let people know. Give them a heads up.
Sorry to hear that, Nathan, and thank you for your service, and it's been a pleasure working with you, and I look forward to continuing working with you still. Hopefully see this Village District through.
And if it doesn't go through, you can't leave.
Trapped. Oh, boy. Well, thanks, guys. No, it's, it's a lot of fun, and, yeah, I'm going to enjoy every last minute here with, so it'll be great. Thanks. And, yeah, and, you know, I feel, and I want to thank Adam for joining and Marjorie for staying with us in full tilt. You know, between the great work you guys and Joanna are doing and the great work these guys are doing, you know, I feel like I can, you know, do it without feel like I can, you know, kind of step down without feeling like I'm really hurting the board or leaving in a bad way. So that's a compliment. I mean, I think everybody's doing a great job putting the board in a good place, so thanks.
Thank you.
And that concludes our meeting. Take adjournment, motion to adjourn.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye.